This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the City of Eau Claire. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
Call this meeting of the Eau Claire City Council to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson, Eaton, here. Bergy, here. Christoffersen, here. Manuel, here. Gregert, here. Strobel, here. Weld, here. Worthman, here. Jean.
And we have quorum. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to our meeting this evening. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for calling the roll. During its Monday evening meetings, the City Council holds our public hearings and listening sessions on public issues that we're going to be voting on at our legislative session tomorrow at 4 o'clock. I want to welcome everyone again this evening and thank Valley Media Works for helping to livestream these proceedings, which can also be found on ValleyMediaWorks.org or if you visit the government channel 99.4 as well as simulcast on WRFPLP FM 101.9. You can also find past proceedings of Valley Media Works' meeting, our City Council meetings, on their YouTube channel if you would like. If you would like to address the City Council this evening, I want to just briefly review the protocol. Once I introduce an item, staff or in some cases, members of the City Council will present on that item and following that, Council may ask some additional questions for clarification. Then we open it to public comment. Once the item is open, please approach the podium and state your name and your address for the clerk. You'll have five minutes to speak and you'll see it, there's a light here at the front that starts at green and moves to yellow and then red. Once it turns red, that means your five minutes of speaking, your five-minute speaking turn has come up. And I may remind you to wrap up your remarks if you go past, well, I will remind you, it just depends how quickly, but I will ask you to wrap up your remarks at the five minutes as there's a lot of folks that would also like a chance to speak. Sometimes Councilmembers will ask an additional follow-up question just to seek further clarification and so please wait just a second at the podium after you speak. Lastly, if you do not wish to speak this evening, I want to make you aware that we have a comment form at the back of the room and you can fill that out and we get that information at our desks so that we can help with our deliberations tomorrow. You can also look on their city website, we have all of the, I hope the city web, the contact information is up, as some of you may know, our city website's under renovation, but hopefully you're able to find our emails and our phone as well on the city website. Lastly, we also offer a public comment period and so if you are here to speak on an item that is not listed on the agenda or something that's listed on tomorrow's agenda, there's a sign-up sheet at the back of the room that you can sign up on and then we'll get that, I'll call you forward once our public comment period has begun. Those speaking turns are for three minutes. With that introduction, I would like to get going on our first order of business and this is going to be a presentation, my apologies, this is the public hearing on our alley improvements. Presentation's going to be held, brought to us by Dave Solberg. This hearing is a proposed improvement on the alley east of Fifth Avenue from Congress Street to Fulton Street. Mr. Solberg.
Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
This alley is, we had 13 alleys approved previous earlier this year, this will be the 14th. This is the alley east of Fifth Avenue from Congress Street to Fulton Street. It's in the historic Randal Park neighborhood. We received a petition for this alley late last year and it was accepted by the City Council on November 13th. The existing alley is in a worn condition, it has asphalt pavement, what the, and it has no public utilities in the alley. What the project proposes is to reconstruct the alley to a 12-foot width with two inches of new Batumino pavement and it will be grouped if approved by the City Council with the remaining other 13 alleys that were approved earlier this year. With that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from Council regarding this alley improvement over on Fifth Avenue? Any follow-up questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Then are there any members of the public who came down this evening to speak on Item 1? Again, this is alley east of Fifth Avenue, Congress Street to Fulton Street. Is there anyone this evening who came down specifically to speak on this item? Seeing no desire, we will move then, we'll close that item, move to Item 2 on our agenda. This is regarding street improvements, specifically Item 2 is a public hearing on proposed street utility and sidewalk improvements on the following streets. Eddie Lane, which is from Star Avenue to Hastings Way, and Melby Street, which is from Anderson Drive to Hastings Way. Mr. Solberg.
I will go over both projects and then would be happy to entertain questions at the end of Melby Street. Both of these projects are on the north side of Eau Claire. They run from Hastings Way to the west. These projects are vital links that connect Hastings Way with the neighborhoods and the industrial park on the north side of Eau Claire. Both of these projects contain railroad crossings with the Union Pacific Railroad. The railroad does have crossing improvements scheduled for the summer, which is the reason why we are coordinating both of these projects with the railroad projects as well to minimize disruption for the north side neighborhoods and businesses. Of note, the railroad crossings, when they are improved with railroad forces, they will meet current safety standards, which would make them Quiet Zone compliant at some point in the future. And we're hoping that it'll be one seamless project for each of these two streets in conjunction with the railroad construction. And of note, these projects will be coordinated so both Eddie Lane and Melby Street will not be closed at the same time into the, into the, to the west from Hastings Way. So I'll go over Eddie Lane first and then I will go over Melby Street second. So the project limits for Eddie Lane start right around Western Avenue and it goes to the Star Avenue intersection. The utilities in Eddie Lane date to the 1940s. The pavement condition ranges between 16 and 58. This street is classified as a minor arterial and is 34, or 36 to 64 feet wide. What the project proposes is to replace the utilities with new utilities, new water main and sanitary sewer and storm sewer and construct the street in essence to the same width that exists currently, making a number of improvements along the corridor. I will go through the improvements from the west to the east. At the Star Avenue intersection, we will be reconstructing the intersection. We had looked at making a tabletop intersection, which is where you bring the pavement up to the surface of the top of the curb. So the sidewalk, you would go from the sidewalk through the crosswalks at grade, but after having an open house at the airport in early March and listening to some concerns from the industrial park, we are proposing to reconstruct the intersection in more of a standard type intersection with the pavement at the level, the grade level that you would expect. We will be enhancing our signage coming in and out of the school zone. There is a school at this location, a church, a convenience store and another business in this corner, so there are a number of pedestrians in the area. There are crossing guards during the school crossing times in the morning and the evening, but we are going to put some advanced school zone signage in conjunction with a project coming into this intersection and then also looking at having larger stop signs with some better reflective warning on the, on the post that holds the signs up. As you proceed to the east, the street, the curb and gutter remains in the same, same width that exists currently. It'll be a new driving surface, new curb and gutter. We will be proposing, or we are proposing, striping bike lanes along Eddie Lane that would continue up to the Old Abe Trail where it crosses. We also are proposing a crossing at Kilborn Avenue here. Feedback that we had taken was the crossing at Star and the crossing at Western Avenue was quite a distance and there was a desire to have a crossing somewhere in between because of the proximity of Anderson Drive with the railroad crossing at this location and the number of large vehicles that turn in and out of Anderson Drive, we felt a mid-block crossing at Kilborn would be the safest spot to provide that, that crossing. As we proceed further to the east, we get to the Anderson Drive intersection. We're making some radius improvements, trying to square it up a little bit to make it easier to look to over your shoulder when you're making a turn out onto Eddie Lane. But yet, we're keeping this radius so it doesn't inhibit traffic going, particularly truck traffic going into the industrial park from Anderson Drive to the north. One significant safety improvement that we're adding is at the railroad crossing, we are proposing a sidewalk connection to connect the sidewalk to the west of Anderson Drive, across railroad tracks and hook up to the Old Abe Trail. So you will be able to proceed without having to cross Eddie Lane or the tracks without sidewalk to the Old Abe Trail along both sides. We were able to reduce the radiuses in this intersection of Western Avenue with Eddie Lane and shorten the crossing distance for the existing crosswalk here to make it as tight as we could get it distance-wise, but yet still allow the turning radius for large vehicles to turn onto Western Avenue to that industrial area as well. And then we're bringing the cross-section into the intersection and matching the existing pavement that is at this location. Again, the railroad is making improvements to the crossing, they're adding crossing arms at the railroad. With that, we were requested to look at some additional signage. This is a state trail that crosses Western, or crosses Eddie Lane. There is a lot of activity that's going on in this area between turning off of Eddie Lane, Western Avenue, Anderson Drive. So when we get the final design from the railroad for what signs and features will go into the rail safety improvement, we will try to have some sort of trail crossing ahead or something for the Old Abe Trail crossing Eddie Lane. Our primary focus for safety and improvement is to make sure that the railroad crossing signs are not degraded by having additional supplemental signs that would be in a lower priority, but we will seek to try and make this more prevalent and are looking at also with the widened distance here, having a trail crossing or pedestrian crossing sign on Western Avenue as well. So with the large number of industrial vehicles that go through this area, try to promote a little, little clearer awareness that there would be either bicycles or pedestrians using the crosswalks. At some point in the future, if bike lanes are extended across Eddie Lane, we stop them at the Old Abe Trail now and encourage pedestrians to use the underpass, but if the, if the on-street bike system is extended, the intersection will support that. We would have to do some modifications to the existing marking, but at least physically there is room in this area to continue those at some point in the future when it continues on Eddie Lane to the east and then potentially up Locust Lane into the areas on that side. With that, that is the Eddie Lane project. The other project is Melby Street, the next crossing to the north. And it's a similar, it's a similar scope project, but it's much shorter. Here's Anderson Drive, where we are matching in just to the west of Anderson Drive and matching in where the pavement for the reconstruction of Hastings Way stops at this location. The utilities in Eddie and Melby Street are date to the 1950s, so we'll be replacing our utilities, replacing the driving surface. Feedback that, that we had taken was at an open house and from subsequent follow-up was to make sure that there was the ability to turn left onto Anderson Drive and to keep traffic going through on Melby Street. So we're maintaining the two lanes of traffic that are going westbound and then there's a single lane of traffic that go eastbound. Again, the railroad will be installing crossing arms and rail safety improvements at this railroad crossing as well. And currently, the sidewalk ends at this location and here and we are extending the sidewalk to connect to the Old Abe Trail along the north and south sides of Melby Street. This was an area that was identified in the bicycle, the City of Eau Claire bicycle pedestrian plan as a sidewalk gap, so we are making that connection. You can see, this is the existing trail that was worn from pedestrians accessing that without the use of a sidewalk, so that will be a safety improvement. We're able to add the sidewalks as long as we don't lengthen the railroad crossing, so that's why you see the sidewalks come in and hug the back of curb at this location. If we place an extra at-grade panel on those railroad crossings, it becomes very expensive to add another panel to that, in the six figures worth of cost. So for that, we are having the sidewalks fit within the existing crossing width and shrinking the lanes slightly to accommodate that, but we're still with the reduction in lane width, we're still able to accommodate two lanes of traffic adequately going westbound and a single lane coming eastbound. With that, I'll take any questions on either of these two.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Do Councilmembers have questions on these two items? Councilmember Jean.
Could you turn back to the Eddie Lane? You indicated there are, would be bike lane on the other side, correct? From the farther side, right, correct?
On the east side of Hastings Way. There is not on the east side of Hastings Way currently, but in the future, it would be something that we probably would look at. So on Eddie Lane, there are no existing bike lanes, but we are proposing from Star Avenue up to the, up, well, up to the Old Abe Trail right here. You can see where they stop, right there. And then from this point to Hastings Way, we're encouraging the bicyclists to use the, the pedestrian underpass.
Has there been any thought about, pull a bike lane to the other side too or just, just not enough space for the?
To the, to?
From the south side, I think, yes, correct.
To the side, there is room to add bike lanes if you adjust the striping, but they don't lead to bike lanes on the east side of Eddie Lane. So for now, we extended them to a, what we felt was a logical terminus at the, at the trail and then utilize the existing. And then when we look at Eddie Lane, at some point in the future, across on the east side of Hastings Way, the pavement markings on this side would be worn and we could, we could alter these pavement markings to match up with what the design is on the other side if, if bike lanes are approved, then you would have a system that would go through the lights. But, but currently, there, it's not striped and it's not set up for that on either side of the actual intersection with Hastings Way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there further questions? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Obviously, we've been in touch a bit today on this project, but I had a question that kind of came up and, and I guess it's kind of builds off of Councilmember Jean's question. And I guess, would it be possible in order to improve access for bicyclists to use the underpass to upgrade the sidewalk that exists just to the west of the underpass to a trail at that northeast intersection of, of Western Avenue and Eddie Lane?
In the northeast?
Or sorry, this, I guess it'd be the southeast corner, yeah.
The right-of-way, it's very faint. It's going and it's actually showing that this is potentially slightly going through the corner. So if you were to widen that sidewalk to a trail width, you would push it closer to the curb, so there is room to do that there, but you would lose that boulevard space that provides kind of a, a calming area with the large number of vehicles. So this is the existing sidewalk, we weren't planning to do much unless it was, unless it was impacted with our utility construction out here. There's physically room for it, but it does transition from five feet where you have the boulevard to, you know, an eight-foot plus wider when it goes underneath there. The other connections on here, the sidewalks are shown as five feet and then where they're at the back of curb, on this side it's six feet. Typically, our sidewalks are five feet with a boulevard, it's six feet if they're back of curb.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from Council on either Eddie Lane or Melby Street? Improvements, another question, Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Acting President. I guess I wanted to switch over to Melby Street real quick, actually. And this is a similar type of question. I'm just kind of looking at the opportunities that we have, where we have a trail that was just completed on Melby Street to the east of Hastings Way. But then it has people go to the north side of Melby Street from the south side to connect over to the Old Abe State Trail. So I guess I was wondering if you could explain how we could, if there would be space to put, to upgrade this, the currently proposed sidewalk on the north side of Melby Street from the Old Abe State Trail to the, at least to the gas station, from like the five feet to say an eight-foot trail?
On the, on the north side, the right-of-way line goes through here, right at the tip of my pencil, it's very faint. So there would be room, this is shown as a five-foot sidewalk again, similar to Eddie Lane, further to the south. We're constricted right at the crossing, so there wouldn't be any latitude to have a wider sidewalk than the six feet on each side that we have here. The south side, the right-of-way, XL Energy owns this corridor that goes through here on each side of our right-of-way. The south side, we're constrained, so if you were to widen the sidewalk on the south, it would end up being almost on back of curb. On the north side, it would, there would be room to widen if it, if it were the desire to have a more trail width connection to the sidewalk over here with the trail. We're proposing five feet of concrete sidewalk. If it were changed to an eight-foot asphalt trail connection, it would be a similar cost to the five-foot concrete sidewalk. We had that request on a project last year with our frontage road in front of ShopCo, where we're proposing a sidewalk from Stein Road to the west and Council chose to upgrade the width on that with a different surface and ended up being fairly cost-neutral.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Jean.
Thank you. I noticed in that there, there's a mobile gas stations on the north side and there's a store on the south side. Is there any affecting, like closing or something affecting to?
The, there is no right-of-way effect to them. They are outside of the construction limits. This, this will be closed, so there will be a detour in place for each of these. When Melby Street is closed, traffic will be detoured onto Eddie Lane and when Eddie Lane is closed, it will be detoured up to Melby Street. So there will be, we will work with the businesses to get the word out like we do with all of our construction projects that affect businesses, that the businesses are still open. So there won't be a physical impact on those properties, but there will be a short detour during the summer when it's under construction. And I neglected to mention that in this section here up to the tracks, we do have a section where bike, bike lanes, on-street bike lanes are, are proposed with striping just an edge line. Again, once we get to the intersection here, at some point in the future, we could stripe lanes through the intersection and then with the project on Melby, the bike lanes start over on this side. So again, this one could be at some point. To the west, there are no bike lanes currently until you get significant distance to the west through the industrial park, so that was one thing I forgot.
Can I, can I get a second question?
Sure.
When is, when is the construction begin or what are you planning to?
We're going to coordinate construction with the railroad. So our, our premium, our, our most optimistic timeframe would be to do at least Eddie Lane during the summer vacation for the schools, since Sam Davy School is right there. There are some cost savings that can be had as well as inconvenience if we're able to do it the same time period with the railroad. We haven't received their schedule, we've told them that we would like to do it this summer and it seems probable that they'll be in the same timeframe, but I, I'm not able to tell you that we would start like in June or July, but I would anticipate it will be this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Dave, I actually wanted to ask one. Is the Quiet Zones, what's this, how does, how will these projects help toward our Quiet Zones?
So these projects on Eddie Lane and Melby Street and there's a third one on Star Avenue down, or down by the VFW, the Office of the Commissioner of Railroad ordered the Union Pacific Railroad to make safety improvements to these crossings even prior to the fatal crash that occurred at Hogarth Street, the next crossing to the north. They were made for, they were required to make safety improvements, they weren't required because of Quiet Zone. It was, it was pure exposure of cars to the higher number of railroad trips that are being used there. So it's a safety improvement, but they will be Quiet Zone compliant. So those are three crossings that in our Quiet Zone study that we had conducted five years ago, were over a million dollars' worth of improvements to those rail safeties. The, the City of Eau Claire, our responsibility for those rail safety improvements will be to do the pavement marking that the railroad specifies, so you see some railroad crossings and also some signage. And our partners in community services installed signs and did some pavement marking as soon as last fall already to make us compliant with our requirements and then the railroad is scheduled to do theirs this summer. So that's three of the eight crossings on this line that would be Quiet Zone compliant.
Wow, thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Solberg this evening? See any? Thank you again. Then are there any members of the public who are here this evening who would like to weigh in on the items we just heard, the Melby Street and Eddie Lane reconstruction projects? Are there any members of the public here that want to speak on those two? Welcome. If you want to just approach the podium. Good evening. Just state your name and, and address as well.
My name is Nick Solberg. I'm the logistics manager at Veritas Steel, 2800 Melby Street, Eau Claire. First off, I would like to thank Dave Solberg, no relation, and his engineering department for holding that listening session at the airport and taking into account, you know, some of the loads, some of the, you know, things we fabricate. For those of you who don't know, we are the only major steel bridge fabricator in the state and 90% of our projects are federally funded DOT bridges. We are, excuse me, we are one of the largest employers in the business district, 200 workers, 75% are union. We do have one of our partners here from local 2138. The Melby, or the Eddie Lane concerns and the Anderson concerns, we feel have been addressed and mitigated to the best of our ability in terms of getting our product out. Again, like I said, we're very appreciative there. As far as the Melby Lane itself, we realize that improvement has to be done, we're excited about that. What I would ask the City Council as well as the city, when it comes time to let this project and negotiate it, is to take into consideration any closure, you know, limitations so we can continue to truck our bridge girders out through there. In the past, when we've resurfaced Melby, the contractor and the city have worked with us to maintain hours of operation where we can get our trucks out from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM and we can avoid missing customer deliveries. These are large DOT projects where liquidated damages can run in the five figures per day for missed deliveries. Also, I would feel having a limited access or, you know, a daily access would minimize high volumes of trucks that are able to take the main exit off of Melby, you know, minimizing major disruption in residential areas, so.
Thank you. Do, thank you for your presentation, do councilmembers have follow-up questions, Councilmember Jean?
Well, thank you for coming down here to speak. I think one of the quick questions is, is that all your vehicle just using that road, is there any, any other alternative road that you're using?
Alternative roads would include the Star Avenue exit, and we take that down to Mercury and get out on the north crossing. And actually, I have some pictures related to that. This actually came up with the tabletop intersection that Dave Solberg had provided, sure. So this picture right here is a tub girder going to our Red Wing project, so we utilized our high route out of our Melby Street facility, and that included taking Star Avenue through the Eddie Lane intersection, down to Mercury, cutting out through North High School, and getting out onto the north crossing. So that's a secondary route, other secondary routes could include White Avenue to Anderson, and also going north up to Hogarth Street, and going out through the US Bank area. However, we are limited on those routes due to length. This picture here illustrates some of the longer bridge girders we have. We're using steerable dolly equipment here, however, however, just the size of the intersections will limit us. Some of these bridge girders, the overall load, tip of the tractor, the tail of the trailer, or any overhang do reach a hundred and eighty feet, so that's why Melby Street is our primary exit.
Can I add a second question?
Sure.
How many, how many times to truck pull this kind of heavy stuff each day?
On a daily basis, it, it really varies. We're strictly project-based. On an annual basis, anywhere from four hundred and fifty to seven hundred trucks a year.
A year, right?
A year.
Okay.
And that varies, you know, that, that's total truck count, that's anything from a flatbed to a superload such as this.
Does that help? Thank you, Councilmember. Further questions this evening? I don't see any, thank you for coming down again. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this project, the Melby Lane, or, or, sorry, Melby Street or Eddie Lane projects this evening? Anyone else? Want to say a few words, or no? Thanks for coming down, though. Well, Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, I have a question that's probably best suited for staff. And that is around, you know, I think the situation Mr. Solberg, the citizen Mr. Solberg shared was just around some logistical concerns, just to make sure that their loads are going through during possible reconstruction here. I'm wondering if the staff has prepared or would be willing to work around, you know, their load, I'm sure the answer is yes, so I think that would be helpful for our conversation. I know staff has done a really great job at being flexible with the businesses and residents before, so I'm sure that's no different here, but would be interested to hear more.
Yeah, we all, we had a very significant reconstruction project on Melby Street going to the east a couple of years ago, as well as Menominee Street back in twenty-fourteen in front of a concrete girder plant, and we always work very well with with the, the businesses that are in the area, as well as the businesses that go through it, our contractors that we use. You know, not only are they, they good, they're good just because they're on our project, but they also, you know, are a community member, and they work well with the other businesses, so. It's very rare that we're not able to accommodate, you know, most of the businesses' requests sometimes. You know, if we know enough in advance, we can alter utility times, sometimes businesses are able to alter their deliveries around when we know will be at those, those rare moments where there is no other alternative, but I'm not aware of any in the last five years that, any projects where we've had any really significant dire impacts, where we haven't been able to work through those, so I would expect this will be the same.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions, either, I guess, Mr. Solberg, anyone else? See none? Thank you again, Mr. Solberg. We'll then move to our next item on tonight's agenda. This is a public discussion presentation from the Housing Task Force. Number, item number three is a public discussion on the Chippewa Valley Regional Housing Task Force Draft Findings and Recommendations. Mr. Allen, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Acting President Worthman and members of the council. Again, once again, good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to share the update, current status, and findings and recommendations from the Chippewa Valley Regional Housing Task Force. Just to kind of outline where I want to lead us here this evening, is through a brief history or background of the task force itself. Walk through each of the four task force meetings and some subgroup meetings. Go through a, kind of a shallow dive of data review tonight, and then walk through more specifically the summary, the recommendations and findings of, from the, the task force itself, again, in that final draft version before you this evening. And then we'll finish with a preview of what's next, certainly, then before turning it over to any kind of public input or discussion comments here tonight. Excuse me. The Regional Housing Task Force was launched in conjunction with the City of Altoona, led by Mayor Brendan Pratt and City Planner Josh Clements. The first meeting was back in June of last year. There we started working through, kind of what's the focus, purpose, and eventually goal of this group. Can kind of read through this here with you briefly. The focus was a voluntary assembly of stakeholders, collaborate to better understand housing challenges, investigate solutions, and facilitate elevated cooperation. That led to kind of a purpose statement, to increase collective understanding of the housing market conditions and identify factors that are constraining housing affordability, and contribute to elevating cost of living, investigate potential solutions, generate recommendations, and increase alignment around and collaboration in implementation. Should note as well, a good point, good time to point out where the group grew from its initial humble beginnings in June. We don't have to zoom in on all this, but I can just show you briefly, this is the list. What I think Josh Clements refers to is the stakeholder engagement roster. We have nearly eighty participants and contributors over the last several months, so just wanted to highlight that in particular. So all this led to a goal statement, this is in the actual summary of the findings and recommendations. This was a lot of effort to put this together over several meetings with that large group, that large roster. And just wanted to emphasize again, this is kind of that umbrella goal statement that led to the findings and recommendations we'll go through here tonight. That is to provide, well, the goal statement is fair and equitable, it's fair and equitable access to safe, quality, healthy, stable housing for all individuals and families is critical for success in health, economic stability, education, and social mobility. Housing is a fundamental component of community vitality that affects the daily life and livelihood of all people. Disparities resulting from differences in race, ethnicity, income, and location must be addressed. So that was really the guiding statement moving forward with this task force. So moving ahead again through this, this history, the second meeting occurred the end of August, so two months later. And it was just literally a day or two before that meeting that the ALIS report findings came out. Again, asset limited, income constrained, employed is that acronym for ALIS. Provided roundtable discussions at the second meeting, and posed the, posed to the group a number of questions. Those included, what are the impediments and constraints to generating affordable workforce housing based on your profession? I can go back to that roster as well and talk about the variety of backgrounds and professions that were represented and have been represented. How can we effectively collaborate and partner to improve supply? And then we asked folks to list desired outcomes of progress and success, and list desired indicators of progress and success. I can kind of go through some of those top responses, but it leads into those findings and recommendations we'll get to here in just a few moments. Again, that ALIS data, what does that mean, what does it look like? Just a quick snapshot here, it's gonna be a little bit hard to pick all that up. But again, that asset limited, income constrained, and employed, these are households that earn more than the federal poverty level, but less than the basic cost of living for the county, in this case, we're highlighting Eau Claire County. Again, we included, since this is the regional group, we included Eau Claire County, Chippewa County, and some data from Dunn County as well. So to point out, it's circled here. See if I can zoom in a little bit. There you go. Some of the numbers that really wanted to draw your attention to. Acting President Worthman brought these to, to mind in the opening remarks with the State of the City. And I'm trying to read them as well, but twenty percent is where we're at now, I just wanted to highlight that because that ALIS number, in the dark blue, is, are those who are in that technical poverty level. The light blue are those that are outside of poverty or ALIS. But again, it's a little bit hard to tell graphically, but those, these numbers have been increasing since we've been seeing this data come out every two years back in twenty-ten. So it's the fourth year in a row, or fourth cycle in a row, that those numbers have increased. And again, shows you that forty-six percent are in ALIS and poverty total, so it's everything below that light blue line. Also wanted to emphasize as well, we'll talk a little bit more about this here shortly. There's a subsequent study, more national nature, and kind of focused more regionally, more than just county level, but looked at wage rates, and average wage being kind of state wage rate or even regional. You can see here that Eau Claire itself is, is falling behind, or has fallen behind. So that, that's a key number to keep in mind, because as we go through the data and have been going through the data, it's more than just, you know, housing costs, it's all these other components combined that add to the difficulties that we've been identifying here in our studies. So again, getting into the data review a bit, these are some of the numbers that we'll see in the final report. Thank you. I want to talk about housing cost burden, these are cost burden figures comparing homeowners to renters. And so I just wanted to highlight, these are, the number up above at the top row are those that are not in that ALIS category. Others would be considered in that, if not even more so, these are highlighting those who are cost burden, more than fifty percent of their income is going towards their housing costs. And it's, it's important to note that ownership homeowners are only at three percent, but again, that's, that's still troubling to know that folks who are homeowners are spending more than fifty percent of their income on their housing. But it's important to see that four times as many in the renter's side are in that category as well. So drill down a little bit more, I want to talk about housing costs and such related to ownership, and then jump into kind of the rental side of things. So this is pointing out mortgage rates, or, or housing, kind of monthly housing costs. The first group here, these first three red circles or ovals, are those with, this is, those with a mortgage. Down below are those without a mortgage. And just wanted to point out here that those, the kind of the, the largest group, nearly fifty percent of homeowners are spending a thousand, not quite fifteen hundred, per month on their, their mortgage. The median there is about twelve twenty-seven. Again, this, what we're showing here is kind of drilling down a little bit deeper into that ALIS data, kind of what goes into the housing component of the ALIS data, and again, you need to understand as well that, that housing, or that housing is just one component of what we see in the ALIS data, there's transportation costs, healthcare, daycare in particular, in Eau Claire, we've noticed is, is a higher number as well. But this is the housing cost portion of that. And those without a mortgage are, are paying only four hundred to six hundred, the majority are paying around that much per month. And again, just shy of five hundred dollars. Again, important to note that those with a mortgage are spending significantly more than those without. Jump into housing values. Because this plays a part in, again, house, housing costs, both in terms of sale, mortgage values and things of that sort. I'll just highlight a few things here real quickly. Approximately seventy percent of Eau Claire homes are valued between a hundred thousand and two hundred thousand, these two largest categories here. I should mention, Eau Claire is the dark orange or red, depending on how things are coming across on the screen. And the, the green line is kind of the regional average, including Altoona, Eau Claire, Chippewa Falls, and then the counties, Eau Claire County, Chippewa County. Further, forty-five percent of Eau Claire homes were built in three decades, nineteen seventies, eighties, and nineties. Over eighteen percent are nineteen seventies vintage, and about the same, seventy percent are older than nineteen forty. Only thirteen percent have been built in this century. Again, a lot of this is talking into, you know, what's our current inventory, what's available out there? What does the majority of our housing stock look like? And then again, comparing that to those housing values and how costs are associated to that. Again, just doing a little bit of a shallow dive into this for tonight. You know, explaining more of this and getting more into this with the final report coming forward. Another, just anecdotally, wanted to mention that new home prices also are steadily increasing, so this is existing housing values, but you know, where are the new housing costs going? And obviously, they're going in this direction, more expensive. One anecdotal example that was shared with us was that of a fifteen-hundred square foot, single-family home, again, this is the price without the lots, without the property, which those numbers are also going up, was going for about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in twenty-fifteen. The same home three years later is over two hundred and six thousand. And so that's a thirteen-point-eight percent increase in just those three years. And again, a lot of that has to do with the cost of, of materials and labor and such, not just the fact that the market may be increasing as well. Median home sale prices are also increasing to the most recent number, depending on your data source, being now over a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in Eau Claire. So things are, are changing more rapidly with, particularly with single-family homeownership as well. Again, going back to wages and homeownership, we'll get, talking about the, the rental side here shortly. Obviously, this is impossible to read, but this is highlighting, this is one of the graphs in the, in the full report that will be moving forward to here soon. But what this is showing is some data from our friends at Cedar Corp, helped put together basically what, based on your job, your median income in that job, again, this is all just generalized information, but it's very specific to the counties, to Eau Claire County numbers. You know, what could be afforded in terms of your monthly rent, as well as then based on that, your average home price? And I just said, again, a hundred and seventy-one thousand is about median, depending on your, your source, it ranges from anywhere to one fifty to two hundred. So that's kind of right in the middle. But here, one twenty-three is the average of the majority of, of wage types, job types here in Eau Claire County, and that comes out to a monthly mortgage or rent of nine hundred and three dollars, and I can bounce back where I said twelve hundred and twenty-seven is the median. So again, this is very rough numbers, but the point being monthly mortgage and that loan are both on the lower end of what's actually occurring out in Eau Claire County anyway. So jumping over to renters. So jumping over to renters. Should highlight as well that, again, we're diving a little bit deeper into the ALIS numbers. And what this is showing here too, is that we've identified some additional data to go with that, and that's from the American Community Survey, which is through the US Census. So this is a five-year average from 2017 data, should also be known as a voluntary census survey. There's some margin of error in some of the numbers, so, but again, this is the best we have currently. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward to the summary of the recommendations and findings. So here we are with the rental side, in terms of housing costs. Majority folks, again, just establishing kind of a baseline, 63%, largest percentage 500 to 1,000 is what they're paying in monthly rent. To go with that, these are, again, talking about that ALIS here, if you're spending 35% or more, I could highlight as well the 30 and above. So if we included both 30 and 35, these two lines, where over 48% of renters are paying into that ALIS range, more than your affordability level of 30%. Talk a little bit more about that definition here shortly. So it's some, just some baseline data, just to get us our heads focused a little bit as we move forward into the third meeting, back on November 1st, where we broke down further and talked about roundtable discussions and different questions you identified there. Those included, again, based on the information we'd already been gathering at the first two meetings, some of this data review. Again, this is, the data I showed you is a little bit more updated from what we were even reviewing last fall, but it's again, along the same lines of what we've been collecting here through the last several months. So we asked attendees, the stakeholders, what changes to zoning or other local policies would you recommend and support to increase affordability, availability, and variety of housing? So we're talking about more specifically, drilling down into zoning, development regulations. What assistance or incentives would be most effective to generate affordable units? Again, starting to talk about the finance side. What methods should we pursue to acquire and assemble land for residential development and redevelopment? How can our cities, development firms, and nonprofits collaborate most effectively? Again, talking about public-private partnership concept. What information has not yet been obtained that may contribute to our collective assessment of housing or reform prioritization of strategies? Again, that deep data dive, I'll point out as well later that we had over 48 pages of data we assembled to put into the final report, and there's plus some that we've kind of even expanded since then. What other strategies related to affordable living conditions not directly related to housing should be investigated? So again, it's talking about what are the other components that go into that ALIS data that I mentioned as well. from there, we went into our sector groups. So we broke out, and throughout November, we started breaking down to those different categories to get more information, more feedback, more input, and to really fine-tune these different areas of our different stakeholder groups. We had a lived experience and support agency group, builders and developers, zoning policy, and finance. Again, they met throughout November and gave us some feedback as well. It led into that final meeting back in December, where we fine-tuned some recommendations, reviewed and defined portions of the draft document, and then started strategizing on the implementation side of things as well. So it was really out of that meeting three, between meetings three and four, that we were able to put together this summary of recommendations. But one last slide before we get into that, and I don't want to forget concurrent efforts or a number of other things that are already going on, not to mention the work of, you know, Eau Claire Housing Authority, the Eau Claire County and Altoona Housing Authority. Met with folks at Dunn County, they had a community forum on housing back in October. The Joint Homelessness Initiative, that's still ongoing with Aaron Healy, came in through the Housing Authority and their partners in October. Of course, the Affordable Housing Task Force in Porch with the folks at Jona. So with that, now we can start talking a little bit more of what's become of that. We're calling it an executive summary, summary of findings, summary of recommendations. This is essentially kind of the preface to the overall full report that the group is still finalizing. I call this a draft though as well, because the group is looking to meet in mid-March to finalize and fine-tune, perhaps even based on the comments and discussion here tonight. So with that, it was important to identify consensus statements from that group over the, again, we have over 80 different people from various backgrounds. It's important to come to some consensus on a number of basics. I can walk through each of those, but again, the materials were included in your packet as well. We defined affordable, and finally decided after a lot of hand wringing throughout this process, what does affordable mean? And it seemed most appropriate to land on the more common, or most common definition, that is, affordable housing is most typically defined as housing expenses that comprise no more than 30% of gross household income. So from there, we were able to build and define better our different housing segments, not just generally, but more specifically to the Chippewa Valley region. We identified homeless and very low income, income insecure, middle income, income secure, and then three kind of additional aspects of perhaps each of those segments, students, seniors, and people with disabilities. We then broke down, or talked briefly about income measures, so that's kind of speaking to the different data that I've already highlighted here, in terms of, you know, what does Eau Claire County, Chippewa County, and others look like in terms of their, you know, different job markets, segments, and wages related to that? And then housing data, so obviously, talking about some of the housing numbers already shared with you here tonight, just a real brief sample of that. And putting all those things together, we landed on five different categories as part of the summary recommendations. And again, this is based on discussions with the sector groups, all those different roundtable discussions and questions we asked, able to sift this out and work down into these different summary recommendation buckets, if you will. So with that, I'm happy to walk through each of those. And what that gives us is draft recommendations that what we called comprise short-term tactics and long-term strategies for local units of government, businesses, nonprofits, and engaged citizens to consider. Systems approach is required, as no single solution exists to solve our existing housing challenges. I think that was the most obvious thing we identified right at the beginning, is that there is no one single answer to solve any housing challenges that we've faced, and all the ancillary issues that go with that, wages, and other ALIS components. The recommendations are designed to reflect the combined priorities, insights, and creative ideas generated through this discussion, examination of publicized contemporary best practices, which we're still doing, and case study of examples that are yielding success in comparison communities. So these recommendations are presented with a variety of depth of detail, and is generally understood that most will require further focused study and consideration before they're actionable. So what we call this is the assembled menu, as presented does not include prioritization, so that's important to note as well. And from here, we're going to kind of shuffle these around and talk about, starting tomorrow, perhaps, with a work session, start talking about an actionable work plan as a result of these different recommendations. So it's critically important to propose recommendations that reflect the general consensus of the task force in order to reflect collective action. That's what we believe we've done here, we call this kind of a 95% final draft. It is recognized that each jurisdiction will consider their own actions based upon these recommendations, and that non-governmental stakeholders will likewise weigh what their roles may be. So with that, the first one that we identified, kind of the biggest talking points was, you know, what do we have some control over? What are some things that can be modified at the local level and perhaps speak to and address some of these issues? The first one again, is that of development regulations. Zoning is the primary tool utilized by local governments to regulate land use, intensity, character, and location development. Aside from the rising cost of labor materials, zoning was the most frequently cited and discussed impediment and opportunity to increasing housing supply and affordability. City policies was the next. So again, these are things that could wrap our hands around a little bit more easily right off the bat. Cities utilize a variety of policies that directly and indirectly guide development decisions. The chief tool is the comprehensive plan, which identifies the community's vision goals and also includes policy statements and future land use map. These plans are primarily implemented through development regulations, city budgetary decisions such as capital priorities, as well as programs. And again, as we need to, we can go through these sections individually, bullet by bullet, if you'd like. The third on the list, public funding, looking at financing from the public side versus, we'll talk about public-private partnerships next. Public funding, utilization of public funds to assist in the generation of affordable housing is often necessary. Some of these strategies and programs may function best and/or set the stage for public-private partnerships, the fourth item in the list. Effective public partnerships between public-private nonprofit sectors are essential for achieving long-term community success. This dynamic is true for a healthy housing market that provides quality and affordable options for all residents. The last group is, I would say, kind of a catch-all, but those civics, so those trying to be more collaborative in a civic nature and looking at such things as community-wide housing survey, organizing to improve public engagement in housing discussions, and what we've come to call turning NIMBY into YIMBY. So that's the civic part of that. So with that, I'll conclude with a couple other what's next and some questions, and we can go into more detail if you'd like on the actual summary. So what is next? The task force is looking to conclude its final report in mid-March through recommendation refinement, so any other input here perhaps that may add to that? Report development, that final report, which I believe is up to 40-some pages, and I stand corrected, it's over 70-some pages of data right now? And then finally, finish off with some public presentations, the draft summary here we are tonight, work session tomorrow. And should also note that the City of Altoona is going through the same process with their city council on Thursday at their meeting there. Next Monday, looking to present similar information to the Eau Claire Plan Commission. And then the next day, looking to have a similar just informational presentation, no action of course scheduled there, to the Eau Claire County Board, since they've been a part of, Eau Claire County staff have been a part of this as well. And then finally concluding with City of Altoona Plan Commission on March 11th. So again, those are simply presentations at those other plan commission and county board, but of course, there are some public comment periods available at each of those as well, primarily at the Eau Claire County Board and the City of Altoona Plan Commission. So from there, we're looking at that policy and ordinance revision is what we call it, but it's really looking at that work plan, kind of where are we going to take this and put this to action? And then finally, and more specifically, I should say, talking about the policy and ordinance revisions, as we look at a work plan providing a roadmap for short, mid, and long-range targets and action steps. And then finally up there, as you see, public-private partnerships and community collaborations. Help ID local partners, connect with investors, and some of those meetings are already happening and are ongoing. In fact, our new economic development manager has set up a few of those as well, already talking about the funding aspect through investors and IDing local partners through that as well. So with that, can take any questions, but I wanted to just reference some of the materials here, just to highlight and share, as you probably already readily aware, that there are a lot of other things going on related to this issue elsewhere, locally, regionally, statewide, and nationally as well. Wanted to point out the American Planning Association, of which I'm a member, and most of the C planners in the area are, is working on a new housing policy guide, and they are drafting that and have a draft for their member review this month as well, coincidentally. Also wanted to mention, talked about NIMBY to YIMBY, that's what this is, yes, in my backyard, and the Urban Land Institute just released this study as well, and talking about how states and local communities can find common ground in expanding housing choice and opportunities. So this is not a new issue, obviously, it's becoming a more prevalent issue throughout the country, and just wanted to highlight some of those other materials out there that we've already been getting plugged into as we continue moving forward to that final report and final recommendations. Also wanted to highlight our friends at Cedar Corporation have donated a lot of their time and expertise to put together a lot of the data that we've seen here already just tonight. So with that, I'll stand for questions, and again, happy to go through point by point, if need be, all those different sections that we talked about, just highlighted real briefly earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Appreciate the presentation, all of the hard work that's gone in over many months on bringing this forward. Are there council members this evening who have questions regarding the specifics, things that were in this report? Any questions? Councilmember Beaton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Allen. This is very exciting, much anticipated. I've been really impressed by the level of community engagement that this process has seen, so thank you so much for, to you and your partners for doing that. I'm also really excited by the collaboration between the municipalities, between Altoona and Eau Claire. I know that big changes like this can often be a little, we can be a little hesitant to do that because we don't want to create some undue competition between municipalities. And so I was wondering what sort of continued collaboration will happen as we move into more policy change time, when we start to implement some of these policies with the municipalities we've been working with?
Sure, very good question. I think Josh Clements stated very well that, you know, at Altoona, they understood that the housing market is more than just our individual municipalities, it's a regional animal that we need to wrestle with, and so that's going to be ongoing regardless of how it's structured moving forward, if that makes sense. I know there's talk about, you know, housing committees and such. I think it's important to carry forward the work and energy and momentum from this task force. What that looks like is kind of a debate right now, but you know, some sort of a working group that can continue, you know, looking at data, providing input, and just sharing ideas certainly would be worthwhile.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, council member?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions from council? Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I didn't, I'm sure you probably got us that packet with all the statistics and stuff, but I didn't see it in my packet today, so I was wondering if certainly I can get it before tomorrow's meeting. I just, I'm sort of a statistics guy, so I'd like to kind of look all that stuff over.
Sure, I'm happy to share the PowerPoint from tonight with everybody. Again, just as a quick introduction to some of the data that was, that's going into the final report, but can certainly provide that to everybody. We'll be talking through some of that in the work session tomorrow as well.
Thank you. You have a follow-up, council member?
Yeah, a follow-up to that, and I'm sure that somebody amongst all these people that participated probably asked this question, but one of the statistics, or two of the statistics that potentially could affect how we show up on this ALIS report is students. So students pay a lot more rent, you know, they may pay X amount per bedroom, and they also probably earn a lot less income. We have 10,000 students, how does that factor into our statistics? That could affect us both ways on there.
No, it's a very good point. Wonder if I can show some of that here? One of the numbers showed exactly that, that obviously, Eau Claire has a higher percentage of rental occupancy than any of the other Chippewa Valley municipalities or counties. So trying to see if I can see that here, but that's one of those data gaps that we're having to look at, and I'll talk more about moving forward, but in the work session tomorrow. session tomorrow. But it's one of those that we just don't have a lot of good information. As I mentioned, you know, these are numbers, for example, on the homeowner's side, I'm trying to find the, uh, the rental piece here. But essentially, these are, you know, five-year averages, these are voluntary surveys, they're just, uh, the, the quality of the data, uh, we're doing the best we can with what we have here, and this isn't really showing that unfortunately, but, uh, I think it maybe cut off where, where it showed, but we are 53% home, homeowner occupied, and then 47% rental. So you're right, of that 47%, we need to dive in a little bit deeper with that, and that's what we're talking about as well, some of the different, uh, housing segments. We wanted to specifically say, moving forward, we need to study more, uh, groups such as, uh, seniors, uh, those with disabilities, and students. So all that to say, we don't have a lot of good data at this point to really drill down into, but it's something we need to review.
So, so if our conclusions are based on the data and we don't have good data, um, and we're coming forth as a recommendation tomorrow, um, that, that's, that's hard for me, um, to accept that we're, we're going to be doing the right thing based on actual results versus conception, or, I don't know if that's the right word, but, um, I mean, how, how can we be making recommendations if we don't necessarily have the right data?
That's a very good point, and I think what, what we'll see as we put together our, our work plan, and I'm coming forward with a proposal for a two-year work plan, is that we need to find better data, because we can't implement a lot of these recommended policies and modifications without better data. So I think that's consistent with what we're seeing. Uh, certainly didn't want to come in here overselling that we have 35 recommendations that will solve everything and we just have half the data we need. Not at all. I think half of those recommendations will require better data.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Further questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and, um, maybe I can add on to Councilmember Strobel's inquiry that he had. Uh, I think, I'm not sure if this is what he means, but, um, perhaps it'd be helpful to clarify around the American Community Survey dataset on if, uh, there is an adjustment made with the student population, college student population. I know sometimes there is and sometimes there isn't an adjustment. I think that actually would be able to help quantify, um, if indeed the ACS data did include that adjustment for, for university students. Um, I have two questions that I wanted to, um, I guess just bring into the fold, and I certainly do not expect any answers or not looking for them tonight, but I want to put them out there as, um, two pieces that I think are really key to this. The first one, um, as mentioned in your goal statement, if you wouldn't mind plopping that up. So in the second part, or maybe the last part of the goal statement, it talks about disparities resulting from differences in race, ethnicity, income, and location must be addressed. And so, you know, of course, we're talking about housing, and yet, housing and a structure doesn't just stand alone, there's all these intersections of how this, um, makes its way into somebody's life in our community. So I, I would be interested in hearing a little bit more about what can our community do to systematically help improve the disparities that often, uh, affect people disproportionately along these lines. So that would be my first, first item I want to bring up. The second question is around, um, I guess maybe if I can just add in one last thing here. For me, I, I think that when we look at affordable housing, it's, there's got to be this holistic approach, it's not just the home, it's the whole person, that's really important to me, and so I think some of this gets to that, but I guess I would bundle it up with making sure we're taking a holistic approach, um, in the community. And then the second question that I have is, um, you know, do you have any preliminary thoughts or suggestions of how we might identify measures and indicators of success and report on progress? And I know that that was stated, that that's a goal in this effort, and to figure out, uh, how can we best do that, so we can set some benchmarks, we can see if we're succeeding or, or not, uh, not making it, and then adjust as we need to, knowing there will be lessons learned along the way, and it's not likely, um, we'll get it right 100% the first time, and that's okay. The, the important thing is to get a first step out the door.
Mr. Allen?
We can respond to all those, but, uh, those are certainly great questions to, uh, pass along as we move forward, uh, both with the finalizing the task force's work, uh, especially in regards to that goal statement. Are we addressing that appropriately and fully as we can in that final report? Uh, and then that, uh, obviously holistic approach, that was certainly one that, that came out very early and often with the, uh, the task force work, which is why we brought in all those and focused on those different sector groups, to make sure that we are addressing those different components that play into housing. In terms of the, uh, strategies, kind of the measurement strategies, that's a very good point. I think we've tried to highlight those in a basic sense in, uh, throughout the summary recommendations. Just thinking of one, um, specifically here, was we talk about evaluating, evaluating existing policies, uh, you know, prioritizing, um, different redevelopment areas and implementation programs, these are just things under city policies, for example. Uh, we tried to refine the comments as we ask these questions, and they can be perhaps a little bit too summarized, so we're hopefully can drill down a little bit better in that final report as well.
Thank you. Further questions? Council may have on this. Councilmember Strobel?
Just, uh, just one thing, and maybe this would help, um, address Councilmember Emanuel's question on the measurement thing. Something we get currently, um, that might be used as a measurement, um, is the, the building permits.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of, one of the biggest reasons we, the housing costs are high is we have a shortage, shortage of housing, right? So we get those every month or year, um, new home construction in this, in the city and also the, um, the apartments. Um, those are statistics that are pretty measurable, so if we're trying to lower the cost and we see an increase in building, that seems like it would be, uh, something we could use.
Very much so. And I'm trying to find, as we're talking here, uh, some of those, uh, better examples than what I've been giving here as well, but yes, that's certainly one we're looking at, uh, one of the action items, not to, uh, you know, be a spoiler here, but I, you know, we're going to be looking at, uh, you know, housing inventory as well, just setting better baseline standards, some of these data. Again, we're relying on a lot of external sources, and is there anything that we can identify and provide ourselves, again, building permits being one of those, uh, that we can, um, set some better baselines and framework for moving forward rather than just relying on, you know, five-year voluntary summaries like ACS? Absolutely.
Any more questions? Will we open for public comment? See any? Thank you again.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Scott Allen, and as you know, we have our work session tomorrow as well.
Look forward to that tomorrow as well.
Maybe some additional questions, uh, between now and then, so.
Certainly. Thank you.
Then, uh, we're going to open up this evening for public comment on this issue. If folks again would be able to approach the podium and please state your name and address, uh, and, and keep your remarks to five minutes, that would be wonderful.
My name is Janet Frazz, and I live at 2516 East Princeton Avenue. I just want to thank the council and the staff for looking into this problem, because it's such a big problem in our city as, as it is in many cities. I'm here tonight to encourage the city to establish an, an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. I want to quote Paul K. Chappell, who is a peace literacy educator. Paul, uh, he says, "Charity is not and should not be the system to solve inequality. Charity is the painkiller. It helps, but it doesn't solve the problem." Eau Claire has an active, responsible, responsive charitable system. Still, the waiting lists are one to two years for affordable rental housing that is based on income. We have over 300 children and families that do not have secure, consistent housing. The solution is often motel rooms for those on waiting lists and when the shelters are full. This is an expensive patch to the problem, and often not very good environment for our children and families. In a 2018 survey that our city-county health department did on a regular basis, but in 2018, they again, for the second survey, identified mental health as the top area of, of concern. It's difficult to be healthy, both mentally and physically, when you don't have a place to live, a place that's safe and meets basic human needs. If we listed the costs of taking care of the problem that result from the, the lack of housing in one column, and you list the costs of preventing the problems in the second column, I really believe that we would find the second column costs equal to or less than the first column. A healthy democracy requires the discipline of laws and regulations to provide the solutions, not charity. Charity is a very short-term answer. So a city Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is a way to begin a sustainable solution, a sustainable system to solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazz.
Any questions?
See any? Thank you again for sharing.
My name is Lee Hennig. I live at 3150 Runway Avenue.
Good evening.
And unfortunately, I could take an hour talking about this, but I only have five minutes. I recommend the council start addressing the rules that, that the state has put on cities to take control away from their ability to affect things in any way you can. This is one of 100 ways we can start moving forward, but if we get control back at our local city levels and not be dictated at Madison, we have more options. So I just, one solution I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Proznak. I live at 4603 Putter Drive in Eau Claire. I'm recommending to council that, um, they appoint an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee for the city or the region. Um, as Scott has said, I've been on the housing task force here for the last few months. There's over 80 stakeholders that are involved and a lot of ideas that come through, and it's hard to manage all those. Having an Affordable Advisory Task Force, or, sorry, an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee would allow people from the community, stakeholders who specialize in different areas, be able to make recommendations to council and city staff based on their specialties, their experience, whether it's through their professional, um, through their professional lives, whether they work in affordable housing, maybe it's through real estate, maybe it's because they're in banking, or just citizens in the community who are directly affected by the shortage. Um, that, that committee can, can bring different, um, insight, whether it's regarding zoning, regulations, um, how to address the funding sources for it. The last couple, well, I'd say the last four weeks or so, I've spent so much time working with WIDA, we've spoken in different nonprofits, Impact Seven, what it takes to go through to get even funding for affordable housing, and it's overwhelming to say the least, it's not an easy solution. It's not like, oh, we should build affordable housing. Of course, that sounds like a great idea, it doesn't happen that way. It takes time, just the application process alone to get approved for some of the funding is, it's really intense and it's really stressful, it requires developers to put up a lot of money and possibly get a no at the end of it. So again, it's just really important to have a committee that can make recommendations to kind of help guide you guys, make those right solutions for our area, so I would just like to make that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a cold, so forgive me in advance. Acting President Worthman and honorable members of the city council, um, my name is Susan Wolfgramm. I live downtown at 550 Graham Avenue. I'm a member of the Chippewa Valley Affordable Housing Task Force and the co-chair of the Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force. For those of you that don't know, Jonah stands for joining our neighbors in advancing hope. The mission of our task force is to facilitate culture change in Eau Claire city and county so that all stakeholders are informed about the lack of safe, good-quality, affordable housing, and are motivated to take actions to address it through pub, public and private initiatives. We seek to facilitate a culture in our city of community benefit that all of us together, including but not limited to the city council, city staff, developers, lenders, realtors, business owners, entrepreneurs, investor groups, nonprofits, faith community foundations, community advocates, and those with lived experience, our stakeholders and sitting at the table in meeting the needs of all of our residents, our neighbors. We all benefit when we close gaps of inequality, and the research supports that it's also cost-effective in the long run. The stakeholder approach of the Chippewa Valley Affordable Housing Task Force was one of collaboration, but most of all, from my perspective, it demonstrated the will to meet the housing needs across the affordability spectrum, from those without a home to middle-income families who are in need of affordable single-family homes, including but not limited to hourly workers in the service, hospitality, and technical sectors, those who care for our children and our elderly, teachers, firefighters, police officers, correctional officers, students, and many other public servants, as well as those who work in the nonprofit sector. We are in support of all recommendations as well as, um, excuse me, put forth by the task force, and would be happy at a future date to respond to any questions regarding specific recommendations. Our task force is currently collaborating with three developers in supporting their efforts to build affordable housing in our city on the Chippewa Valley. It is always about relationship, trust, collaboration, creativity, but most important from the jump, it's about the will. Our task force has recommended from the beginning that the city council institutionalize an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, similar to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, that would advise our city in forming an intentional and strategic, long-term work plan for meeting the affordable housing needs of all our neighbors in Eau Claire, but focusing on the 46% who are the most vulnerable, our housing insecure. These numbers include many of the hourly employees that our thriving business community depends upon, and also children, seniors, and disabled adults. According to HUD, a family with one full-time worker earning the minimum wage cannot afford the local fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment anywhere in the United States. In Eau Claire, the average two-bedroom, and median's are better, um, to use, but we, we have averages more often, is $800. You would need to make approximately $15 an hour, working full-time, to afford this two-bedroom if you're only spending 30% of your, um, of your income on rent. Our minimum wage is $7.25 an hour. That's not even half, and many of our jobs are not full-time. We listen in our task force to many of the people that we work with, in the 46%, who tell us that they cannot afford more than $400 a month without giving something essential up. So when closing, we all know about the challenges of increasing affordable housing stock in the city. We know it is complicated, and that there is no more state inclusionary zoning developer mandates. I do not believe that we need to infuse any additional energy in that conversation. Let's put our collaborative energy into what is already happening, a will of all stakeholders to meet the affordable housing needs of our community members. The Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force is ready to collaborate in the design and membership of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfgramm. Questions? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Uh, thank you, Ms. Wolfgramm, for, um, showing up and helping to elevate this conversation. Uh, I had a conversation with, um, councilmember Emily Anderson, who sends her regrets for not being able to be here, um, but she asked if I can pass along a question that perhaps you might be able to speak to. It's really around, uh, do you know or have people in Jonah or through your research come across information on the, uh, impact adverse, I'm assuming adverse, impacted children on, uh, lack of affordable housing and/or having to be transient, um, during their formative years? Have, have you come across any research or have any thoughts about that?
Yes. So I don't want to take up a lot of time, because I know that other people want to speak and it's getting late. Um, we're, we, we are given that question a lot, and so there is an entire body of literature. It's called the, "The Impact of Affordable Housing on Families and Communities: A Review of the Evidence Base in 2014." I had earlier sent that body of literature to, to the council, and I would be happy to send it. I had earlier sent that body of literature to the council, and I would be happy to send it again. So just in summary, so I'm just going to state a couple of things here because I carry this with me because people often ask me, okay? So I'm just going to say a little, and then Samantha Grankie, a person with lived experience with children who have been impacted by multiple moves and the lack of affordable housing, she's here to speak as well. So forms of housing instability such as homelessness, multiple moves, overcrowding, poor housing quality, and high housing costs relative to income are associated with health risks for children such as general poor health, asthma, low weight, developmental delays, and increased lifetime risk of depression. Access to decent affordable housing would provide critical stability for these families and lower the risk that vulnerable families become homeless and reducing frequent family moves. So just two more things I'll add. Housing instability can seriously jeopardize children's performance and success in school and contribute to long-lasting achievement gaps. Quality affordable housing helps create a stable environment for children, contributing to improved educational outcomes. Researchers have found that when families do not have enough income left over to cover the rest of their household budget, children experience poorer health outcomes, lower levels of engagement in school, and emotional and mental health problems. Families are also less likely to be able to afford the food they need for a healthy and active life. This is, of course, known as food insecurity. There are many, many other pieces of data, and I have all of that for you, and I'd be happy to send that body of evidence-based literature to you again. But I would like to invite, if it's okay, I'd like to invite Samantha Grankie up to share her lived experience in terms of her children that are impacted, if that's okay. Yes?
Councilmember Strubel.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have an objection to that request?
I had a question from Ms. Wolfgram before the next speaker.
Oh, okay. Is that okay, Ms. Wolfgram?
Of course.
Okay.
Be disappointed if I didn't ask you a question.
Absolutely. You know what? Shots fired. It's okay.
Well, you usually, you seem like you have the answers there, so I think you're the right person to ask this question. You mentioned, and I just caught part of it, but you mentioned the average rent was like $800, and it would take that individual making $15 an hour, X amount of time. My question for you on that is, is that considering that person would be potentially a married person or would potentially having a roommate, or is that just an individual?
It's an individual.
So if that person had a roommate or a spouse to share those expenses, it would have that amount, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Good evening.
Samantha Grankie. My address is 1129 and 1/2 Barland Street.
Okay.
Eau Claire. Okay, so in January of 2016, I was accepted into Treatment Court, Aim Court more specifically. I was released in February of 2016. I had nowhere to go, but Treatment Court offers you kind of like a halfway house. It's called the Smith House. It's on the west side. They charge 30% of your income. Well, I had just gotten out of jail, so I had no income. Therefore, my rent was $600, which the other females I was there with, they were getting SSI. Their checks were $900 a month, so they paid $270. So that really didn't make much sense to me. They did waive my first month rent, but that still left me with a $3,000 balance that I had to pay in full before I could graduate Aim Court. Thankfully, I have family that helped me with that. So that was for six months, and then after that, my only option was to move in with my sister-in-law. Now, she lived in an upper on Eddie Street on the way to Mount Simon. It was a one-bedroom. Currently living there were two kids and an adult, and then me, my son, and my son's father moved in there, so that made it three kids, three adults. Then that was for a period of seven months. And for one month of that period, there were six adults, six children living in that apartment. It was less than ideal. It was probably the worst situation I've ever lived in, but I had no other choice. I had a record, I had no job, and that was all I had. But thankfully, a friend of mine was moving out of her father's trailer, so I was able to move in there. She was willing to rent to me and my family. I lived there for 18 months, still actively looking for somewhere to live, but with a record and very little income, it was hard to find somewhere that was affordable for two adults and a four-year-old. But after being there for 18 months and being at my job for a period of time, I found a place on Facebook, private landlord. I got a letter of recommendation from my probation officer, from my human resource manager at my work, and from my current landlord, and these people accepted me, and that is where we currently live. It is a two-bedroom upper. It is $690, and there are, it's me, my son's father, and we have two sons now, a five-year-old and a six-month-old. It is not nearly big enough, but he makes $16 an hour full-time, I make $15 an hour full-time, and we live paycheck to paycheck. It's really hard. So once again, we are going to look for something bigger, but you know, there's not going to be much else there for us. And like Susan said, had my son been in school in this time where I was in the treatment house or living with my sister-in-law, the instability of the routine and, or the routine for him and the stability for him going to school, that would have been really hard, I think, for him. Right now, he goes to Flynn. He loves it. He is very successful, and he's just in kindergarten, but he does really well. And it's because we have that place to live. But once again, we're going to have to find something bigger and better.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
Questions for Ms. Grankie this evening? See any? Thank you again for coming.
My name is Judy Mosley. I live at 2230 Trimble Street here in Eau Claire. I am a member of the, I'm the co-chair of the Jonah Affordable Housing Task Force, and I'm also an area real estate agent, working in residential real estate in Eau Claire. Thirty years ago in Eau Claire, I was a divorced mom with a house full of young kids, and I was working full-time. And if I received a little bit of child support now and then, I was grateful for it. And it was awfully tough to keep a roof over our heads. What didn't go for housing went for childcare and transportation and food, and there was nothing left over after that. So, you know, I've been there, done that, and I did what we hope will happen for families in these situations. My life improved. I worked hard. I got better jobs. I got better housing. My children went to school, relieving me of a little bit of the childcare costs, and I got remarried quite a few years later. And I got remarried to a man who owned his own home. It made a huge amount of difference in our lives, and it's one of the things that's always impressed me about, you know, different ways that people can improve their lives, and being able to own your own home is one of those things that really makes a difference for families. The amount of stability that it injects into your life is just, it's phenomenal. So all these years later, you know, my husband and I have empty-nested for the most part, but we have adult children who struggle. And I remember 30 years ago, the city of Eau Claire having to send CBD, let me get the initials right, the Community Development Block Grant money, had to send money back to the federal government without using it here in Eau Claire because the NIMBY response was so strong in the neighborhoods, that the housing authority couldn't do what that money was intended for. So they had to send it back. And at the time, I was so upset about that, that, you know, it just seemed like a phenomenal waste to me. And here we are 30 years later, and I kind of feel like things haven't improved that much for families in our community. I have a 28-year-old son who's autistic. He works two jobs so that he can pay his bills. At least 2/3 of his income goes for housing costs. One of the things that you find when you really start doing the research on affordable housing is that it's linked to so many other things. And one of the things that affordable housing is linked to is transportation. So my 28-year-old son lives on the Upper West Side of Eau Claire because that's where he can find housing that he can afford. He works downtown at a local hotel. And when I suggested to him that he might want to find housing closer because he's spending an hour and a half of his day on buses going back and forth to work, and I suggested, gee, you might maybe look at housing closer to downtown. And he was the one that pointed out to me that that's not an affordable option for him, that the housing that has developed in the downtown area is way out of his price range. So, you know, you find that these things are kind of linked, and we haven't necessarily gotten better in the last three decades about taking a look at any of them. So I would like to really urge you all to take a real good look at all of the information that this task force has put together, as well as the recommendations. And the important part isn't that we have perfect data or that we have perfect solutions or that we have perfect recommendations. The important part is that we do something. We can't afford another three decades of not doing something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Who would like to speak this evening on this presentation? Any others who would like to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Brandon Buchanan. I live at 1435 and 1/2 Summit Street. I want to thank you all for having this task force that was convened and for taking the time to have this public hearing and for the possible actions that you are considering taking. I'm speaking to you here today as a member, an elected member of the Eau Claire County Board. I want to first welcome all of you to our county board chambers. I sit actually right over there, right behind Terry. I serve as a representative for District 27, which is just south of Birch Street and across Hastings Way up and over to where the North Crossing is. I represent from Eau Claire residents from all walks of life, but in particular, a number of my constituents are what you would call lower-income, the folks that are identified by that ALICE report, that are just one medical bill away or one $400 car payment from not being able to make rent. So it is on their behalf that I want to thank all of you for giving us this space and for possibly taking that action to address this very serious issue. The reason why I'm speaking here today is because I wanted to address one very specific concern that I have heard from some in our community, or one specific complaint. I've heard that, from some, that city council should not be addressing this issue, that poverty or affordable housing are not the purview of local government. Some have said, I hope, when I hear 300 children are homeless, I hope there's a church that can help them, because that's not government's role. I don't want my taxes helping those people. I could argue a moral argument about that, but I'm not going to. Instead, what I want to say is, guess what? If you aren't willing to pay for it now, your taxes are still going to pay for it in the future. How do I know this? Because in addition to being a member of the county board, I'm also a member of the Judiciary and Law Committee. Right now, as we're sitting here, our county is looking into considering whether or not to expand our jail to build a fourth pod in this very building that we are all sitting in here tonight. That will cost us well over $5 million to flush out and $2 million a year just in additional staff. But that's just the cost of the jail expansion. Why am I bringing up the jail expansion? Well, because as we heard earlier tonight from Acting President Worthman and from so many other studies, if you know your neighbors, you're less likely to have crime. If you have a stable place to live, it's called housing first, if you have a stable place to live, you can integrate in society, you can get the help you need, it's a whole lot easier to find a job, it's a whole lot easier to keep that job if every single night you know where you're going to sleep. So if you aren't willing, the Royal U, not this body, I know this body's interested in taking action, but for those of you out there listening who don't think this is government's role, that you don't want your tax dollars being spent on it, you will be. And it's going to be a whole lot more expensive, and it's going to be a whole lot less humane. So thank you all for being willing to take action, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Buchanan. Keep it coming down this evening. Further comments from those this evening on this presentation? We just heard, anyone else want to make a few comments? Podium is yours. Anyone else seeing no further desire to speak on this item? We're going to close it. Appreciate again the work of Mr. Scott Allen and all of the task force in the presentation, and thank you again for everyone who came to be a part of this discussion this evening. We're going to move to our next item, which is a public discussion on an ordinance amending Chapter 6.14 entitled "The Keeping of Honeybees: Code of Ordinances of Our City of Eau Claire." This item was postponed from our January 21st and 22nd, 2019 council meeting, and this evening we have Ms. Stromberger joining us to share the details. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. So these are changes proposed following the study issue that was before council at your January 7th meeting, which was previously postponed from your October 23rd, 2018 meeting. So just to highlight briefly those changes that were made following the study issue, most notably, public space beekeeping was removed from this draft of the ordinance, as well as changing the notice and objection requirements. So in this current draft, notice will be given to anyone within 50 feet of an applicant's proposed hive location and to all adjacent properties. If anybody gets that notification, they have the right to object to the issuance of a license, and a license will be denied if either at least 40% of those notified choose to object, or if somebody who is notified has a medically documented allergy. So the other changes to the ordinance, you've seen a couple of times already.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stromberger. And are there questions from council on these proposed changes to the beekeeping ordinance? Councilmember Weld?
President, just clarification on those that can apply, is it a tenant or a property owner? And does the tenant need the property owner's permission?
A tenant could apply, but they would need the owner's permission to do so. I believe the application form has a sign-off for the property owner to do that.
Okay. And then the notice then is sent to the neighboring properties. Is that sent to the owner of the property and, or to the address you have on record for the owner?
Correct. Under this proposed draft, notice would go to the address of record for that property, which if it's a landlord, isn't usually that same address, but we would also send it to that address so that the occupant would get notice as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President. I have a question that might fit under E, under 614030. My question is around the necessity to have an annual license, and the reason, I'll give a little background. And the reason, I'll give a little background of why I'm asking about that. I serve on the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Public Policy Advisory Committee, along with your colleague, Mr. Nick. And one of the things the League is interested in looking at is recommending a change in state law for dog licenses, to go from one year to perhaps three-year license. So it got me to thinking, well, one, I'd never thought of that idea. But two, then, I guess, when we have these annual licenses, is that something that we have to follow by state, or is that driven hereby the municipality? So for this topic, I'm wondering, are we confined to an annual license, or is that something that the city can consider to make it a multi-year license?
The city does have discretion to create a longer license if it would choose to do so. Currently, the only one that I'm aware of that's longer than that is a bar tender license. That's a two-year license. But I believe the Health Department has reasons as to why they would want it to be an annual license. I see Ms. Kezey's very adamant about that. If you would like to hear reasons, I'm sure either herself or Mr. Steinbach would be willing to speak to that.
If the Acting President would allow, I think that would be very helpful.
Mr. Steinbach?
Matt Steinbach with the Health Department. The biggest reason for the annual license would be the opportunity for people to object, to, especially for, due to changes in neighbors. We have a rotation there. And to have that one-time opportunity, neighbors change from year to year. And if someone would move in with a severe allergy to bees, that would provide an opportunity for them to make us aware of that and object.
If I can have a follow-up, please. Thank you. Thank you for that information. Is there any stipulation that would allow, let's say, mid-year, a neighbor moves in, has a severe allergy, that the license could be revoked? Or even if they're there for six months, it can't be considered?
That is a great point. It's not specifically mentioned in the ordinance. I don't know what our limitations would be with that. I have seen similar language in other ordinances. But there are complaint-based opportunities, but that would kind of fall out of the lines of that. I don't know if you want to lean on that. Okay.
I can just have one last follow-up. So it seems that perhaps the main driver to have this annual license would be really driven by potential allergy and health reasons?
Yes. Another would be that if there was a issue with an apiary, and there were a lot of nuisance issues, that that would provide an opportunity for neighbors who may be consented at the origin to express those concerns and object in later years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Steinbach. Thank you, Ms. Stromberger. Do councilmembers have questions of either Mr. Steinbach or Ms. Stromberger this evening? Further questions? Councilmember Strobel?
Ms. Stromberger, I see that we took out the bees in the public park section, and I'm really happy about that. But my other question is number five and ten on here. I'm still trying to figure out, on those large parcels, it doesn't seem like those would necessarily be residential parcels, but parcels, but up to forty-nine acres could have forty-nine hives. Where are we still envisioning something like that occurring?
Maybe the Health Department wants to chime in on this one as well. But the reason that we are adding those larger acreage exemptions is we've had inquiries from, say, schools that have large amounts of property, and are capable of hosting larger hive, or more hives than the ordinance currently allows. So this accommodates those requests.
And for those, would there still be protections for the neighbors, or maybe the users nearby?
There are, there's still, there are large acreage exceptions, I guess the word would be. But if they're two hun, is it two hundred and fifty feet from a property line, then they're exempt from some of the other requirements. And obviously, two hundred and fifty feet is a much greater distance than what we're requiring of the smaller properties.
Take a follow-up?
Just one more follow-up then. So let's say it's on school grounds. The city's sort of saying in here what type of enclosure you have to have, and all that. Would you still, even though it's school grounds, would we still have some type of input into the type of enclosure or safety that there would be along those hives? Or is that now out of our purview?
I guess I defer to health as to what specifications they require for a hive. But enclosures wouldn't necessarily be required. Yeah, it's not a, it's not part of the ordinance itself.
The enclosures that we were talking about at previous meetings were focused on public park spaces. There's not a requirement for residential or other zoning areas to have a fully enclosed apiary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Thank you, Mr. Steinbach, for answering that question. Are there further questions on the ordinance this evening? Further questions? I don't see any. Thank you again for your work and your presentation. Going to then open this item up for public conversation. This is, again, item four on our agenda, the Keeping of Honeybees, specifically amending Chapter six point one-four. Is anyone here this evening who would like to speak on this issue? Anyone here who would like to speak on this particular issue? Seeing none, we will then close the public comment period for that item, item number four, and move to item number five. This is a public discussion on an ordinance which would create Chapter five point six four, titled Dockless Bicycle Share and amend Section ten point oh eight, point one hundred, entitled Parking. This evening, this presentation is going to be done by Mr. Pat Ivory and Ms. Stromberger. Welcome. Good evening.
Tonight is the public discussion on the ordinance that would establish licensing provisions for companies that would operate a dockless bike-share business within the city. I'm going to provide a little brief background information regarding what a dockless bike-share operation is. And then Janessa's going to talk about specifics of the ordinance that you'll be considering tomorrow. Leah Ness from Engineering, who's kind of in the back there, from Engineering, has also been very involved with the development of the ordinance and some of the research. So she might be available for some questions tonight also. So first, in terms of what is a dockless bike-share operation? Zoom in here. There we go. A dockless operation, it's a self-activated bicycle rental operation that utilizes mobile technology, and typically, it's your smartphone, to provide a shared use for bicycles, either for recreation, or provide transportation, an alternative for people to get from one location to another. Bike-share operations aren't particularly new. They got, they're started in the United States back in nineteen ninety-four in the Oregon area. And then they actually started in Europe, so they've been around for many years. Even though they got started in nineteen ninety-four in Oregon, it still took quite a while for it to migrate over into the Midwest area. Many of the staff members became familiar with the concept of the bike-share programs back in two thousand and fourteen, when Councilperson Emmanuel sent an email to staff regarding programs regarding bike-share, particularly those that were operating over in Chicago. I think that became, came from a conference that she had attended. Following that year, a student from the University of Eau Claire prepared a research paper discussing the feasibility of a bike-share implementation within the City of Eau Claire. In that paper, basically, the conclusion was it questioned whether it was feasible to do that within the city back at that time. And that was looking at a particular type of bike-share that I'll explain a little bit, in terms of what the use would be at that time. Since that time, the UWEC Student Senate has indicated an interest in a bike-share, and staff, and representatives of the community. Organizations have met with a couple different bike-share companies, such as Zagster and Bee Cycle, that have indicated an interest in coming to Eau Claire. At that time, they were looking at a docking style of a system, and I'll kind of explain that in just a minute here. In recent years, there's been a lot of changes in the bike-share industry, with the initial programs being those docked type of programs. And now they're moving to what's called the dockless bike-share operations, and they're becoming more popular. This is a example of here, of one of the, of one of the docking style types of bike-shares. The primary drawbacks of the docking system has really been their cost. Our meetings with vendors over the years for the docking systems have indicated that the startup costs for these types of systems are in the thousands of dollars for the installation of the docking stations. And then typically, the vendors will require the municipality to be involved with the maintenance and the operation of these systems, too. So based on the meetings that we've had, there's been really no organization or no city interest really in stepping forward and taking responsibility for that sponsorship, and for that ownership of the program. So that leads us to the dockless type of a system. And here's a photo here showing some Lime bikes. Basically, what a dockless system is, it's that the rental bikes, but there is no docking system. The bikes just are really parked at specific locations, just basically standing up using a kickstand. So there's no really docking mechanism that's involved with it. The advantage of this system, it limits the cost of the city, and there really, in most cases, there is little, little to no commitment in terms of having to maintain or operate the system. Primarily is the responsibility of the vendor or the company that is operating it. So that brings us to this past fall. The city received a formal request from the University of Eau Claire Student Senate, asking the city to prepare and adopt an ordinance that would allow for the operation of a dockless bike-share within the city. And the city manager, Neil Peters, directed staff to develop a ordinance for consideration to address this request of the university. So at that direction, a staff committee representing various departments has met and researched the bike-share operations in other communities, and prepared an ordinance that would allow for the licensing of companies that could operate a bike-share within the City of Eau Claire. The departments and divisions that represented on this committee included someone from Finance, City Attorney's Office, the Police Department, Engineering, Community Services, Planning and Economic Development. The ordinance that you have before you tonight, we have presented this to the Student Senate, and to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And both of those groups seem to support the ordinance as we have it drafted and that you'll be considering tomorrow. Leah also sent a copy of the ordinance to a number of potential vendors or companies that operate dockless shares, to get their input, to see if we were kind of on the right track with this ordinance. And we didn't really get any real good response back. Basically, a number of responses indicating, thank you for sending the ordinance out, but they didn't really wish to provide much comment. So we really didn't get much negative or positive feedback back from the vendors at that point in time. A couple of questions that you might have, that I just want to kind of address before we get any further, is, does this particular ordinance cover or include motorized scooters? There's been a lot of information in the media over in recent years, in recent months, in cities, both good and bad, in terms of the operation of motorized scooters. This ordinance does not allow for, does not include the provision for the operation of motorized scooters. The reason for that is that state law currently in Wisconsin does not allow motorized scooters to be operated on city streets. So that's why we don't have this included in the ordinance. We have heard talk in Madison that there is some discussion that this might be addressed in the next, in the upcoming months, in terms of how motorized scooters would be handled or not. If that is changed in Madison, then we might come back and revisit that, in terms of whether that would be something we want to look at or not. But currently, right now, that's not part of the ordinance. Secondly, how does a dockless bike-share work? Essentially, the bikes are placed in designated locations each morning. Our ordinance here would allow for the bikes, there would be a requirement that they have to be at least at two city locations. And the vendor could also then contract with the private sector, or with the university, or the Chippewa Valley Technical College for other locations. And we would fully anticipate that a vendor would work with the university, and have one or two or more locations on campus where they would have these bikes available in the morning also. The bikes contain electronics and GPS tracking, so you need a smartphone in order to operate that. You would download an app on your phone. And then, once that app is on your phone, you open that app, you'd be able to locate where the bikes are located. Once you get to that point, there would be an acknowledgement on your phone, basically indicating that you agree to the terms of the use of that bike, which would include language in terms of making sure you comply with city or all city ordinances, and then any types of requirements that the vendor may have also. Then you'd be able to unlock the bike, ride it to your destination. And when you get to your destination, you'd be able to use your app, lock it back up, and move on. Someone else could then come forward and take that bike and activate it, and go to their particular location. So as the day progresses, you start with the bikes at certain locations. But then, during the course of the day, people are activating these bikes, using them for different things, and they wind up at the destinations where they, where they wanted to go to. Just wanted to show, I'm not sure how this will actually show here. But this is on my phone here, where I downloaded the Lime app for the Lime bike. This happens to be for the Lime scooters. It happened to be when I had a short getaway. The location that I was at didn't really have the Lime bikes available. They happened to have the Lime scooters, so I used that. But the application and the intent is essentially the same, whether you're using the scooters or the bikes. But in this case, it would be for the bikes. So you'd press on that on your phone, and what happens then is a map comes up. And in this case, we can pretend we're in San Diego. And what the map shows is basically, based on your location right here, it shows where all the different bikes are in your immediate vicinity. So in this case here, if I'm standing right here, and I wanted to select one of these bikes here, basically on your phone, all you're doing is pushing the icon on your phone to select that particular bike. And then this information comes up on your phone, indicating that this is the bike that you're about ready to select. This is the cost of what it would be here. Also, if you're not quite sure, a lot of times, there might be five or six, maybe even more bikes in that area, and you might, you want to make sure you got the right bike. So what you can do is push this button here, and there'll be a buzzer, or a bell will ring on that bike or scooter, to make sure you got the right bike before you go ahead and start selecting it. So once you have the bike that you want, you would push this down here to scan for your ride. And then another menu would come up, which I'm not able to show here. But that would be the list of terms or the agreement, in terms of that you're, before you can use this bike, you have to abide by all the city regulations that are stipulated in the code, and anything that the vendor would require. And then, to scan your ride, you would put in this number here. The bike would unlock, and you'd be able to drive it to your destination. Once you get to where you want to go, there would be another menu down here, basically to end ride or lock your bike. You would push that, and that would end your ride. What's kind of nice about the, about the system is then you can actually, there's information in terms of the rides that you've taken. So for example, this is one ride that lasted for one mile. It took me nine minutes, and it cost me two dollars and fifty cents. And then another ride here, was just a little over a half a mile, that I And then another ride here, was just a little over a half a mile, that I, it was 14 minutes, so I was kind of dawdling, you can tell on that particular ride here. And that was $3.25. So you have a complete log of all your different rides, and you can keep track of the money that you spent in terms of the money that you've put into the system. And some of this information would be available to the city then in terms of some of the ride information. So how much does this cost? It really depends a little bit on the vendors, but if you look at Lime as an example, what they do is they charge $1 to unlock the bike, and then the fee is between 10 cents and 15 cents per minute. So for example, if you were going to take a bike from downtown and take it down to campus, say if you're looking at about a 10-minute ride or so, you'd be looking at about $2.50 in order to take that ride from downtown down over to campus. If you were visiting the city and you wanted to go out like for a 30-minute ride or maybe a 60-minute ride or something like that to kind of see the sights, a 30-minute ride would be a little over $5. A 60-mile, a 60-minute ride would be about $10 roughly. And again, that would depend kind of from vendor to vendor. And then lastly here, inquiries about other communities' experiences. One of the things that we, our committee felt was, there has been a lot of press out there about bike share, both positive and negative, and we wanted to kind of find out a little bit experiences about maybe some other communities. So we reached out to Green Bay, Wisconsin, and then also Golden Valley, Minnesota. Golden Valley is an inner ring suburb of the Twin Cities area, about 30,000 in population. Both of those communities started, launched dockless bike share operations this past summer, and they're similar to kind of what we're talking about. They're in a range of about 100 bikes to 150 bikes, so we thought it was somewhat comparable. And in talking with representatives from their cities this past fall, they really had nothing but positive things to say about their experiences with the, with the dockless program. You know, we have heard horror stories about bikes winding up in the rivers or abandoned in parks, and some of those things can potentially happen, but from the experience of Golden Valley and Green Bay, things have been, been very positive. The one thing that we, was interesting in talking with the fellow from Green Bay, within the first two months of their operation, they had over 3,000 rides within that short period of time, which indicates that there's quite a interest. Now again, Green Bay is a little bit different than Eau Claire, but it does show that there is that interest out there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Janice. Janice is going to talk about the specifics of the ordinance itself.
So this ordinance creates a seasonal license for companies. They would be able to operate in the city between March 1st and October 31st. Maybe not this year, they might not want to on March 1st, but in theory, they could. It limits the number of bicycles in the program to 150, with an additional 50 able to be approved by the Engineering Department. It requires a financial guarantee per bike of $80 to be on deposit with the city in the event that the city incurs any costs in relation to the bike share program. It requires that the city be named as an additional insured by the company in the amount of at least $2 million. It requires that the licensee have a brick and mortar location within the city and an appropriately zoned location, so it can't just be, you know, somebody's front yard, so that they have a spot for service and maintenance on the bikes. It requires that the licensee rebalance the bikes throughout the city every morning by 6:00 AM. Essentially, if all the bikes end up on campus, at the end of the day, the licensee has to come in and redistribute them to various locations throughout the city. And the licensee would have to rent at least two bicycle parking locations from the city, one in the north side, one in the south. There's a map included in your packet showing a bunch of different locations and associated costs that staff has created that would be available for, for rent by the licensee. It also requires that the licensee educate the user regarding bike riding regulations in the city, in particular, thinking about a lot of the downtown locations where you can't ride a bike on a sidewalk. So in anticipation of increased bike traffic in the city with this ordinance, staff is recommending changes to the bike parking ordinance as well. Just a couple of highlights from that. Bicycles would not be able to be parked so that they're blocking pedestrian or vehicular traffic. They would have to be, be able to allow for clear passage. And bikes would only be able to be secured to a bike rack or a bike corral, essentially something that's intended to have a bike locked to it. And then any bikes in violation of those regulations would be able to be removed by the city. So there's also a section at the end then that amends the fees and licenses schedule. It would create a one-time fee per bike of $15 that the applicant would have to pay to the city. It creates a $250 initial application fee, $150 renewal application fee, and then either a $100 or $200 charge for the various rental locations throughout the city. If I can take any questions, ask Mr. Ivory or Ms. Ness.
Thank you, Mr. Ronberger, Mr. Ivory. Questions from council? First up is Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you, Mr. Ronberger. Just, just one question on the, I know the new regulations on parking them. Number four on there says, shared bicycles shall only be parked to bicycle racks designated bicycle parking areas or on private property with the consent of the property owner. How, how would you expect that to be enforced? And there was an asset question as I was just in Mesa, Arizona recently, and they have those scooters, and they're sort of all over the place, and you see them sort of littering the sides of the road pretty much everywhere. So I, I think this is a good idea, but if I'm, let's say, going to rent one of these bikes, what's the, what's to stop me from just parking it on the boulevard downtown and walking away?
That, so that list that you're referencing, that's a list of items that we're asking that the licensee provide essentially notification of to a user? Those aren't necessarily enforceable items? So, you know, like the first one is helmet use is encouraged. So that ultimately, the, the user would have to abide by that, that parking ordinance that I was referencing. So as long as they're legally parking the bike, then they're going to, they're going to be in compliance. We're asking essentially that the licensee recommend that they park it in a bike corral or a bike rack, something like that, but it wouldn't be a requirement per se.
Councilmember Strobel, do you have a follow-up?
I do, thank you. And in any case, it sounds like the regulations or the ordinance is asking the vendor to go pick them all up at the end of the day and redistribute them someplace else. So in any case, they're only going to be there for that day, correct? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Beaton?
I have a couple of questions. So I, I'm still having a hard time kind of working off of Councilmember Strobel's question. I'm having a hard time imagining if a, if a bike in this, in a program doesn't need to be locked to anything, it just is on a kickstand, then why would it, would it still need to be on a bike rack? Or how would that work?
Yep. So it wouldn't have to be essentially that list is like a list of best practices that we're asking the licensee inform a user of, you know, helmet, you know, yielding to pedestrians, complying with traffic regulations. So a best practice is to, you know, park your bike in a bike corral somewhere where it's designated to be. But if they're legally parking it per ordinance, then they're not going to have an issue.
Could I have a follow-up?
Sure.
And as far as, I'm, I'm thinking even beyond a bike share program and just people using their own bikes, changing bike, bike parking ordinances, would there be any sort of initiative on this, on the part of the city to install more bike racks? I know that downtown, it's often extraordinarily hard to find bike parking, and there's a lot of bike traffic. And so I guess I'm just thinking about myself, or not thinking about myself, but in my own anecdotal experience, that, you know, sometimes a lamppost is the only thing you can find.
Yep. I'll defer to Ms. Ness on that question.
We have been working with the bids to look at bike rack locations on street, especially with the capital improvement projects. Graham Avenue is one that is just recently being completed last year. We'll look at amenities that will go along that street, so trash receptacles, benches, and bike racks. We prioritize the bike rack locations, so we'll do a first priority, second priority, third priority, and lay out a number of bike racks that, locations that would be available. Then I believe with that project, we're purchasing 20 to 22 bike racks that will be placed in the downtown area, and we work with the business owners on the placement of those in the bid district as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ness. Further questions from council on the bicycle, dockless bicycle program? Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you. My question was about how does this work within the city limits? Like what if someone decides to take the bike to Altoona, now that that's gaining popularity, and if they just go pick it up again, or if there's any, is that part of best practices that stays with the city? My question.
Sure. There's nothing in the ordinance that requires the bike to stay within city limits. If a user determines they want to ride it outside, they're certainly welcome to do that, and if it stays outside of city limits, it's on the company to, to go back and retrieve it if it's left somewhere else.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yes, I do. A different question. I'm wondering about, are the bikes equipped with like lights for nighttime riding, or would that be the responsibility of Michael, the person riding the bike? Or I don't know if you know what the bikes would be like, just for safety-wise?
It would depend again on the vendor a little bit. The bikes that I'm familiar with did have front lights and they did have rear lights. I don't know if they were necessarily as good a quality as I would like to have on my own bike, but they did have those available.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy, thank you, Mr. Ivory. I wonder if, and I'll, I'll follow up on that question. I wonder if we might consider putting that into the ordinance itself. I, we have, oftentimes, I'll see cyclists at night who don't have lights, and it's a, it's not safe for them, it's not safe for anyone, and so I wonder if we might consider that part of the ordinance. Further questions? Councilmember Beaton?
Thank you. In staff's conversations with and research into vendors, are there any vendors who offer low-income fares or low-income programs?
I don't have a specific company per se, but when looking at some communities, they did offer different alternatives for different levels of income for the rider usage and the rates that they would need to pay. I don't know if it came through certain programs, but there were different alternatives by some companies.
Could I, just a clarifying question, and were those programs provided by the private company or by the municipality? Do you know?
I do not know that. I know that it was an option, and I'm not sure if it was funded through the community or, or an alternative through the vendor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman, and I guess this is a additional question on kind of the same concern of price and accessibility. Is there, I understand that this dockless system seems to be a little bit more dependent upon technology and smartphones than maybe a docking system would. So is there an actual way to, for someone without a smartphone to access these bikes? For a typical company like Lime, for example?
Based on my experience, no. I'm not aware of capability of access, you know, without a smartphone. There's a possibility of that a vendor could work through a, if they were to place the bikes on, with a private, another private business or something like that within, within the city, they could possibly make, work out some kind of arrangement, maybe, that the bikes could be signed out through that business. The only thing is that business then would be liable at that point for the operation of that bike. So they're kind of transferring that liability to that, that business rather than the user. Otherwise, most of the vendors that I've seen and what we've researched on it pretty much is through a smartphone.
A follow-up question to that. Thank you, Mr. Ivory. I guess the, there, and maybe it would be a legal question, too, but is there a way for us to perhaps identify a maximum price as part of an ordinance in order to assure a certain level of accessibility to the bikes? Or I guess this is meant to be a market-driven kind of venture, but at the same time, I think we, there's, there's some concern about cost and accessibility to everyone in the community, so.
Sure, that's something that could be added, certainly. This ordinance is based on a collection of ordinances across the country, and I will say that's not a requirement that I saw in any of those other ordinances.
Yeah, one other thing regarding that is that the license is not exclusive in terms of just having one vendor in the city, so there is the opportunity for competition. So you'd think that would help kind of drive the price downwards, too, by having maybe the potential of having more than one vendor within the city.
Another, another question, Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Worthman. Sort of diving in a little further on the price and options there, is there typically a monthly membership or annual membership? I understand that sometimes these companies will create a relationship with a university, for example, to have students have a specific price point, but is there, I guess I'm seeing this example of $1 to unlock and then a cost per minute, but I guess is there a way to have a membership that you've seen for, for dockless systems?
I guess I'm not familiar with that, whether there is or isn't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor, thank you. Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I have some questions of my own, but if it's okay, I can perhaps add some additional information to some of the questions that were answered earlier.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So there are some accessibility programs that some of the dockless bike share programs have. One example is Lime Access, where they offer 95% off the usual rate, so it runs at 5 cents for every 30 minutes. And you will see that in some of the programs, not all of the dockless programs. The second is accessibility without a smartphone. That definitely is a concern. So back when I first started studying this, the average recipient for, or basically highest benefactor of bike shares was 34-year-old white males who were pretty affluent, and that doesn't seem to be necessarily helping everybody out in our community. So one of the ways that bike share programs had circumvented that or tried to address that was to bundle a bike share program with public transportation, because bike share is really meant to be augment the first and last mile of transportation of getting from point A to point B. So while there's nothing here in this ordinance today, I think there's definitely a possibility to figure out, is there some partnership for bundling with public transportation to make public, public transportation more accessible? And then if people qualify for reduced transit, then they likely would qualify for reduced usage of the bike share. So there's a possibility. And then some library, some libraries have partnered with bike share programs. So while I haven't done any research here in Eau Claire, you know, there could be a possibility of usage of the iPads that are accessible at the library and checking items out there. And so I, I think there are some options there of how we, how our community can address that accessibility. So hopefully that helps, and happy to take any other questions offline. But if I may ask a few of my questions that I have, this is in regards to racks and where people can park their bikes. I know that some communities will have stripes instead of a bike rack, they'll have just, let's say, instead of eight stalls for eight, eight bikes, they would have eight stripes, striped on the sidewalk. Has the city considered doing that as a, as another option? Has the city considered doing that as a, as another option to bike racks?
In looking at the bike parking, we have looked at, um, different ways of accommodating the, the dockless bike share, and by using pavement marking and signage, we thought that would be an alternative, instead of having to purchase a two-hundred to three-hundred-dollar bike rack, um, to be able to use some paint and signage to designate those locations.
Thank you. What comes to mind, for example, for the Lime Bike Company, which, if this passes, we don't know who would be the successful person or company to get a contract for bike, uh, bike share, but they have very vibrant green stripes on the, on the sidewalk, which is helpful for their branding efforts and hopefully helpful for the user to be able to match the bike with, with the green stripe there. Um, the other question is around the fees that are indicated. Um, I'm wondering if these fees seem like they're on par with Green Bay and Golden Valley and other communities you looked into?
Pat did a lot of the research on the licensing agreements and the fees that were related to different communities, but in looking at some alternatives that actually companies sent to us as MOUs to work just strictly with the city, the, the fees are very reasonable compared to what we saw with other communities. And I don't know, do you have that list, Pat, to share?
There we go. Here's an example of some of the different, uh, again, with each city, the, uh, the way they charge their fees and, and, and charges are a little bit different, but for example, Milwaukee, they had a, the license fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, but then they had a per bike fee of fifty dollars, where in this ordinance, we're recommending fifteen dollars. Madison had a application fee of, uh, five-hundred dollars, and then for their, their rent of their public right-of-way, they were looking at fifty dollars per square foot. And if you figure that for, uh, like, a hundred square foot for, uh, for, uh, five or ten bikes, that's substantially more than what we're looking at here. Aurora, uh, had a fees of, uh, license fee of two-hundred, uh, two-thousand-to-five-hundred dollars. This was more of a docking situation, this was a little bit different. Uh, Davis, California, two-thousand dollars. Uh, Durham, North Carolina, application fee of a thousand, renewal of five-hundred, so again, that's subs, that's quite a bit more than what we're looking at. A per bike fee of, of twenty-five, again, where we're looking at fifteen. Uh, some other examples, uh, I guess, uh, St. Louis had a per bike fee of ten, uh, Seattle had a bike fee of fifteen, so they're kind of all over the board, uh, in terms of, uh, boulder of bike fee of, of, of a hundred dollars here. So, really, I think most of our fees, we feel, are pretty reasonable on that, on the lower end of what we've been seeing.
Thank you. That helped answer a question, Councilmember Emmanuel.
Ness, thank you very much.
Further questions, council? I don't see any at this time. We will then close, uh, our question period, but if you have further questions for, uh, staff, uh, either we can ask them again tomorrow before our vote, or if you would like to follow up outside of this meeting, it's also an option. Going to then open up this item for public comment. Are there folks here this evening who would like to speak specifically on our bike share program? Uh, if you want to, I know a few of you here probably this evening, uh, please approach the podium, and welcome.
Hi, uh, my name's Austin Northhagen. I live at eight-fourteen Menominee Street, apartment number four. Uh, I'm a student at the university, and I'm the director for the Student Office of Sustainability. Uh, and one of the big projects that I did over the summer was research bike share. Um, and I'm very happy today to be up here and for it to be on the table and on the agenda. It's wonderful to live in a community where there's opening, or listening ears, open minds, and collaborative minds, uh, from the city, um, because to bring together students, the university, and the city is a rare moment, and I think bike share can be one of those symbols where we can all point to and say, it took every mind, every effort from the city, and say, we worked together and we did something, we did something really cool. Um, and so, I am proud to say that the Student Office of Sustainability and the Student Senate, uh, passed a resolution last Monday in support of this ordinance, and the students are one-hundred percent behind this ordinance. Uh, this is a project that has embraced student leadership, student drive for the last three years, um, and I'm proud to finally see it come to fruition, and so I hope that I can gain your support, um, in voting this up tomorrow, and that we can all see, uh, bike share come to Eau Claire, uh, hopefully sometime this spring or summer. Um, so, thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on this. Uh, Councilmember Beaton actually has a question for you this evening.
Um, has Student Senator or the Student Office of Sustainability considered, um, or discussed a, a program, um, to reduce the cost of a bike share program for students?
We have, yes. Um, it's something that we, once the vendor is selected, um, hopefully sometime within the next month, uh, we will be reaching out to them and finding a way to collaborate to reduce the cost for students.
Thank you. Are there further questions for Mr. Northhagen? Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you again. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello there, folks. Um, wonderful summary by Pat and Janessa and Leah, thank you so much for doing that. So, I'm going to try to keep this short.
Could you be able to state your, your name and your address, please?
Yes. Um, my name is Lauren Becker, and I'm a student at the University of Wisconsin-Eau Claire. Um, and just to give you some background, in addition to being a student, I'm also a student senator, active member of our SOS, um, a resident assistant and a member of our Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee. I've come before our city's representative bodies before on issues that invite community discussion, um, and here I am, again, voicing my support for our collaborative efforts on this bike share ordinance, on behalf of both off-campus and on-campus, um, students. I must call special attention to the work and the determination of our, uh, student SOS Director, Austin Northhagen, done a tremendous job. I couldn't be more proud to say that bike share is a product of student-driven action and a brilliant partnership between the city and our campus, for which I thank you all very much. Providing bike share, an already widely utilized system in the cities, in cities even larger than our very own, um, provides ease of access to affordable, healthy, and sustainable transportation within our city and our community. Ease of access, as usual, increases likeliness of use. This is a fantastic, student-initiated and community-collaborated step towards an even more sustainable and forward-thinking city. So, I thank you, and if you have any questions specifically about, um, student involvement in this, I open, um, to questions of all sorts. So, thank you for allowing for this time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing this evening. Are there questions, uh, at all? I don't see any. Thank you, Ms. Becker, for all of your work on this.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to speak on the bike share ordinance? Please come forward. Evening.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Acting President Worthman and city councilors, thank you for your time and attention, uh, and my thanks as well to the students of the Student Office of Sustainability who have worked on this, uh, for, for quite a long time. My name's Jake Rassi, I'm here in my capacity as a government and community relations specialist for the University of Wisconsin-Eau Claire Chancellor's Office, and I also had the privilege of serving in Student Senate a few years ago. Uh, and I can tell you, when I started as a student in twenty-twelve, uh, downtown wasn't a place for students. It is remarkable how rapidly our economic development, tourism, uh, and residential qualities in Eau Claire have changed, and I think that's undoubtedly been for the better. Uh, I know that for many, many years, folks in the SOS have had an interest in this kind of program, uh, not only as a mode of recreation or tourism, sightseeing, but as a means of transportation, uh, and I'm pleased to hear the, uh, conversation tonight is reflecting those goals we've heard for so long. I think that the, uh, thing that, on behalf of UW Eau Claire Administration, I'm most happy to, to thank you for, and especially thank city staff, uh, is the integration of student feedback and comments, uh, in the ordinance process. I think the work of the city attorney's office, uh, created ordinances that would allow us to, uh, effectively implement and solicit, uh, contractors who could provide this service while also protecting the assets of the city and providing broad utility to students, uh, community members, and visitors to our city. Uh, in, in some, I would say that the university and the city, uh, work best together when we stop proactively, think about what is going to be best for students, because so often, this is an excellent case, where we see a prospective student who maybe hops on a bike and gets to see more of downtown Eau Claire than they would otherwise, becomes a student, becomes a graduate, and maybe it goes on to become a resident of Eau Claire. As I personally, well, I do live in Altoona, and I apologize for that. I'll, I'll leave my bike downtown, I won't leave it in Altoona. All of that to say, thank you very much for your consideration of this issue. I know it is many years in the making. My thanks to the city manager's office, uh, the city attorney for putting this all together, uh, and while I'm thanking folks, thanks to all the city crews who have done so much to keep this city functioning, uh, and, and, uh, able to be traveled at all over the past several weeks. So, uh, with that, uh, our thanks for involving students, taking this into account, and we do support, uh, this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rassi, Rassi. Uh, any questions this evening? Don't see any. Appreciate it. You know, is anyone else here this evening who would like to speak, uh, on the bike share ordinance, pr, as presented? Anyone else this evening? Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, uh, A, uh, Acting President. Uh, my name is Johan Wykoff. I, uh, I live at three-thirty-nine Niagara Street. Hello all? Uh, I'm, uh, just for the record, I am not involved in any of the committee, uh, any of the committee of, who have done the great work that they've done with this bike share program, although, as a biker, I would just like to comment on, uh, biker, biker's safety. As someone who originally lived in Minneapolis, Minnesota, who has seen, uh, the Lime scooters going around all over the place, I have seen some kids who have gone, rode into the road, who have rode their but, scooters into the road and ha, and have seen the article reports about injuries, head injuries, wrist injuries and all that, and I would just like to add, I'd just like to say that hopefully, we're all taking, we're all taking into account the safety, the public safety issues, as well as the societal issues as well, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff, and thank you for your presentation. Is there anyone else here this evening who would also like to speak on the bike share program? If not, close that item and move to our final item for discussion this evening. This is the parking ordinance, public discussion on ordinance, mending table nine of the City Code of Ordinance entitled, Parking During Specified Hours, and specifically parking prohibited passenger loading zone related to the Pablo Center at the Confluence. Ms. Ness?
Thank you. There are two locations tonight that we're going to talk about, um, both adding loading zone restrictions to table nine of the ordinance. The first one is the west side of the one-hundred block of Graham Avenue, near the Pablo Arts Center, and the second location is on Eau Claire Street on the south side, um, just to the west of the existing handicap parking stall. City staff has been working, um, with the DEKI Parking Committee, the Police Department, the South Barstow Bid District, um, regarding parking, uh, related to the Pablo Center and the opening of this new facility. With the Graham Avenue reconstruction project, it was one, this one block was not signed, um, and we've used it, uh, or taken, uh, some time to try and find the proper signing to help accommodate all users in this area. This is a aerial of the location. But we started out working with the DEKI Parking Committee and, um, at the request of, uh, the Pablo Center to look at a loading zone area for event timeframes. This was one of the original signs that we had placed out on the street that was a lot of information for people to process as they're driving past, and we found that not very many motorists were reading these signs, and we were having many violations. So, to, um, address some concerns with the DEKI Parking Committee, we discussed that signage and looked at some additional, um, signing alternatives and parking approaches to accommodate the ask of the downtown businesses to maintain as much two-hour parking as possible and also allow the loading and unloading zone timeframes for the Pablo Center events. So, we came up with, it's a flip sign that has the standard no parking from two AM to six P, AM, um, in the downtown area. It signs for two-hour parking from six AM to six PM, and then, when there is an event present, or going to be present, the staff at the Pablo Center can flip the sign down to, uh, alert the motorists that there's no parking, um, for only immediate drop-off and pickup zone area. There are three posts located along the west side of Graham Avenue that have this type of signage on it, um, and then, in addition to the signage, uh, these fluorescent green cones have been used. This was the very beginning, uh, trial state of the cones being set out, but now, um, the cones are set along the curb edge in the morning to alert the, the motorists that there will be an event in that evening, um, or in the immediate future with a time indicated on there, so they know that if they park at two o'clock and the event parking starts at four o'clock, they need to have their vehicle moved, because otherwise, the, the, um, blackface will go to the loading zone timeframe. This happened over a couple of different meetings, um, and working directly with the Pablo Center staff. At the ribbon cutting, we had the initial signs up that I had showed you, um, and through one, a, a couple of the first shows at the Pablo Center, and we had, uh, feedback that the circulation of traffic and pedestrians was not to the, uh, standard that we were hoping it would be. With the installation of the new signs and the coning, um, and some work with our CSOs and, uh, staff at the Pablo Center on parking standards and, and flipping the signs, um, I feel that the circulation has really improved in that area for traffic and pedestrian, for motorists and pedestrians. We're continuing to work with the Pablo Center, um, on promoting parking in the North Barstow Galloway Ramp, um, and providing prepaid options for parking potentially through their ticket sales. And, uh, I guess I'll move on to the next section. I have a couple more sign pictures. The other loading zone, uh, location that we are looking at is at the request of the district and the Lutheran Social Services. At the DEKI Parking Committee meeting, they indicated the need to have a drop-off and pickup location for their clients. Specifically, the location would be behind this vehicle. It's one stall back on the south side of Eau Claire Street, west of Barstow Street. The LSS has clients that drop off and pick up between seven AM and six PM, and the district said that their drop-off pickup time is typically busiest during mealtimes. And then, on the, the off-times, that stall could also be load, used as a loading zone or a drop-off pickup for the Pablo Arts Center as well. Just in this area, there is a lot of activity. I wanted to note that on, uh, Eau Claire Street on the north side, there is a bus stop, and that area is essentially a loading zone because there's only sixty feet of curb there, and fifty feet of curb is used for bus, bus stop locations, so, and that's another area for drop-off and pickup too, when buses aren't in the area.
Thank you, Ms. Ness. There questions for Ms. Ness on the presentation regarding the changes to our parking ordinance? Any questions specifically? I don't see any. Thank you again. Thanks for all your work on it. Are there folks here this evening who would like to speak on this discussion, on this parking ordinance? Welcome forward.
Hopefully, we'll bring this home very quickly tonight. My name's Ann Larson. I reside at 128 East Grant Avenue. I am the Program Manager for Family Preservation Services at Lutheran Social Service. So it is our group who is coming forth and asking for this parking spot. Interestingly enough, tonight, we've talked about, through your discussion on the affordable housing, we've talked about a lot of the very people that we are also looking for a simple parking spot. The family preservation programming serves the, probably the mentally ill population of Eau Claire, who are also probably dealing with addiction issues, who are also probably dealing with homelessness or inadequate housing, unstable housing. We're talking about people with poverty issues. And we also talked a little bit, or previous speakers talked a little bit, about the impact on the children. And so what happens with our programming is that a lot of it is preventative. We are trying to work with these families to keep them together, to keep the children in the home while the parents are working through all of the issues that they might be dealing with. There are times when the children are removed from the home before the parents get, reach what you might call a full recovery. So what we do in this building down here on the corner of Eau Claire and Barstow, we have family visit rooms there where either previous to having children removed or after the children are removed, families can come together and spend time in a safe environment, and they can be meeting, being served and keeping those bonds together that are going to lead to hopefully healthy reunification, and they're going to go on and do well. One of the things that happens, though, is that most of these children are placed either with grandparents, some of whom could be elderly. They are placed with extended family members. They're placed most often in foster care. So the foster care folks in our community are already doing a lot of the work to help support the children in this community. When they're coming to bring these kids, they're coming carrying one, maybe two car seats, a couple toddlers, there might be a kindergartner, a couple of their own kids, and it's really very difficult and has become increasingly more difficult with the wonderful development in downtown. When I began working at LSS in 2005, we had the corner parking lot where we're going to now have a plaza. We did not have the student building across the way. There was much more parking available, and as we've seen these wonderful developments, we've also seen a little more difficulty for those who are coming, receiving our services, and for those people in the community who are supporting our children and the people who are having difficulty. So we're asking for this spot not for ease for the staff who work there, not for ease of, you know, anyone else, but for the ease of those people who are supporting, really the people in the community that you guys have been talking a lot about tonight. So compared to some of the other things you discussed, we just want a little spot, and then people can drop the kids off, you know, pull in, drop the kids off and go. They don't stay there the whole time, and then they come back two hours, three hours, five hours later. So that's the basis of our request for this spot.
Ms. Larson? Any questions this evening from council? I don't see any. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm Jason Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of Pablo Center at the Confluence and also a resident in District Four, which is new, so it's nice to be back in Eau Claire from Chippewa. I want to talk to you sort of about Pablo Center. We all worked together to do a great development. We had a concept of how parking would work, and I would like to thank city staff and the South Barstow Bid for helping us sort of evolve how parking is going to function and us being, having the ability to change that signage, but communicate clearly to those guests who are downtown, who are trying to park and utilize our businesses in our downtown bid prior to us having events and then us moving to event parking only. The change in signage really helps and I think is far clearer, and Leah has helped us get there as has the CSOs. And so really, I'm here just to sort of take questions from you because I'm sure there has to be a number that are going to sort of explain why and how we got to the conclusion that we currently have and how it functions for us as a building and ensures our financial success as well as the success of downtown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions this evening? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Acting President. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for coming down. Just a very short question. Are you satisfied with this proposal? Will this meet your needs?
This proposal absolutely takes care of our high school matinees when we have a number of school buses coming down and dropping off young youth that are coming to experience sort of the Children's Theater productions that are happening during the day. It ensures in the evenings and weekends when we are having events that we can change that signage two and a half hours prior to an event to give proper notice, and the bright neon green cones make it very easy for us to drop out, and it's a color that's complementary to our blue. So it works well and we like it. And it also ensures that those businesses can function on days we don't have events. So it's been a good balance. As Councilman Strobel has witnessed, it's still an evolving process as we try to sort of work around the amount of snow that keeps getting piled on our boulevard, and as we remove it, it adequately is reapplied and we remove it again. So it's a good balance, but it does serve our need as we expected it to and also ensures that at every level, people have access to the building.
Are there questions? Councilmember Greger.
Thank you, Acting President Orthman. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I guess I kind of wanted to dive into some related issues here a little bit. So there's definitely some concern about access to the building, like from folks who have limited mobility or that have handicap permits. So could maybe you explain what you currently do to help serve that population, but also what is kind of coming in the future in terms of information? And as I was on the website for the Pablo Center and I didn't really, I couldn't really find anything about like recommendations for parking or transportation, so I wanted to see what you have in store for that.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that, Councilman. So what we currently do to mitigate or handle handicapped parking was taken to the South Barstow Bid, and so we increased the number of spaces in the South Barstow Bid to three total spaces, which is above the 2% that's required throughout the bid district, and Leah can talk to that at greater length if necessary. Those three spaces are in closer proximity to the Pablo Center than what the previous handicap spaces were to the State Theater, to give a comparison. Not to compare the two facilities, but we absolutely have more adequate parking for handicapped individuals than we previously did. If a guest purchases a handicap seat within the theater, our box office contacts them and gives them free valet parking for that event, and that's anyone who's within the vehicle ride with them. So they all receive free valet parking with any purchase of a handicap seat in the building to help sort of ease that as well, so it's an additional cost. And we're using that as a check because if it was by every handicap placard, that would be sort of unmanageable and untenable from a financial situation for us. What we're looking to do is JB Systems, who's our website provider, will be rolling out additional transportation guidelines. We're just, we're losing our marketing manager to Pablo Properties tomorrow, and so with the loss of Elaine Coughlin, those delays are just sort of hitting me a little bit, and so we hope to have those updates out in the coming months that will sort of drive people to the North Barstow Ramp as well as the South Barstow Ramp and communicate where local parking is throughout the city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does that help answer your question? Further questions, council? Councilmember Strobel.
I might, thank you. I might just make some comments as long as Mr. Anderson's up here, but I'm on the DEKI Parking Committee.
Councilmember Strobel could, would, I think the, if there are questions, if the comments, maybe we could wait for them tomorrow. Is that okay? If there are questions for Mr. Anderson?
I guess, yeah, right. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Further questions for Mr. Anderson this evening? See any? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Anyone else here this evening who would like to speak on this item regarding the changes to our parking ordinance? I don't see any. We will then close that item, item number six, and we will move to our public comment period. And during this period, if anyone has desires to hear their viewpoints residence, our city council, you know, welcomes them. We have the signup sheet at the back of the room. Ms. Merle is just gathering it now. We don't have anyone who is interested in speaking during this period, but thank you all for coming down this evening. We'll close item number seven, I guess, our public comment period, and we'll adjourn, sorry, we won't adjourn. We will move on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. We'll move into closed session. I'm going to read this. It's a motion duly made and carried by the city council to go into closed session to confer with our city attorney regarding a claim for tax exempt, tax exemption filed by Blue Gold Real Estate Foundation Incorporated, which is permitted in closed session pursuant to Statute 19.851G of the Wisconsin statutes. That motion has been made by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel. Do we have discussion on that item? Any discussion on this motion going to closed session? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greger?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Welles?
Aye.
Orthman?
Aye.
And that motion has passed to go in closed session?
The Eau Claire City Council meeting will return in a moment. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067 or online at ValleyMediaWorks.org. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. We now return you to the Eau Claire City Council meeting.
Call this meeting of the Eau Claire City Council to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Beaton?
Here.
Bergy?
Here.
Christopherson?
Here.
Emanuel?
Here.
Greger?
Here.
Strobel?
Here.
Welles?
Here.
Orthman?
Here.
Jean?
And we have quorum. Thank you again, Madam City Clerk. Welcome, everyone, to our Tuesday legislative session this evening. Glad you could make it down. Want to thank Valley Media Works first off for helping to livestream the proceedings of this meeting. Please make sure to check those out at ValleyMediaWorks.org or 99.4 on the government channel, and that's also simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM. You can also find past meetings of this city council on their YouTube channel. Going to get moving right away with our first order of business this evening. First up is our consent agenda. Is there a wish or desire by city council to remove any items on the consent agenda separately, or do you have any questions for our city staff, something you would like clarified? Councilmember Emanuel.
Thank you, Acting President Orthman. I'd like to move item number 11 to be considered separately.
Is there a second on that? Does it need a second? Okay, well, I think Councilmember Beaton has agreed a second anyway, so that item will be moved for separate consideration. We'll take up the consent agenda minus item number 11, which relates to claims. Are there any questions on the rest of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Strobel, seconded by Councilmember Anderson, the consent agenda minus item number 11 has been moved and is open for discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Greger?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Welles?
Aye.
Orthman? Aye.
And that item passes. We move then to item number 11, which is being taken separately. Councilmember Emanuel had asked to remove this. Councilmember, would you like to speak first on this item?
Thank you, Council President, Acting Council President Orthman, and thank you also to Councilmember Beaton for throwing the second out there. So the reason why I'd like to consider this separately is because through what I've read in the newspaper and through a little bit of what I learned yesterday in closed session, which, you know, I won't be repeating here in public, I have some concerns about just some of the, some of the process, and I guess when I boil it down, it seems that the city and the nonprofit organization that supports students has a good track record of working together and trying to find a solution instead of going through a legal process. And it seems that sometimes when we allow things to have a little bit more time for consideration, that perhaps another alternative can come out. And so I would be interested in postponing this until the next meeting. So I guess we're, I don't have a motion just yet. This is just to be considered separately, but I would be just curious to hear from other colleagues if, you know, they would be, you know, ready to vote on this tonight or if they, you know, feel that they could use a little bit more time, and I think that would help me because I'm struggling, as you can hear from my voice. I'm struggling with how to proceed forward with this.
Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? No one? Okay. Councilmember Emanuel, would you like to make a motion at this time?
Let me just take a moment to think.
Okay. Any other councilmembers wish to address this again? I guess I'll ask, I'll open up the mics, if someone would like to talk about their preference on this. Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you. Yes, I would say I would be prepared to vote on it tonight, so.
Okay. Councilmember Emanuel? I think the floor is yours.
Thank you, Acting President Orthman. I think we can take the vote. I'm just struggling because I think in just a conversation a few minutes ago with the city manager, he shared that he would be concerned that some of the substitute resolution that I had worked on today potentially could jeopardize a legal strategy, and, you know, I do have an obligation to the city, so I don't have it in a clean enough form where I feel like it's probably in its best format. So I think we can go ahead and take a vote when you're ready for that, and I'll just share that I'm going to vote no against this this evening because I think we could use some more time, and I think that a better solution is out there. I know our community has a really good history of working with one another, and I'm certain that a better solution is out there, and I don't agree with kind of how this has been proposed, and I would rather just see that all parties can come together and work out a solution proactively, and I hope that's what will happen as we go forward.
Okay, thank you. Further comment before we take a vote on this item? Councilmember Strobel.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to support the resolution as it was presented to us on the advice of our professional counsel and city staff, so I'm going to support it as it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Welles?
Thank you. Acting President, I also will support the resolution, and I think there's still time, whether we approve this today or not, to work something out, and I'm still confident that we're going to do our part as far as the city to make sure it's a fair and equitable agreement between both parties, so.
Thank you. Any further comments before we vote? Any further comments before we vote? I see none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, this is specifically item number 11 regarding claims.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
No.
Rager?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Orthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes. This evening, we have one proclamation. If I could ask the Winter Mission team to join at the podium, that would be wonderful. Okay, this is great. So, thank you all for joining up here. I just want to say a few words about, about your important work. For those of you who may not have kept up with everything that's been going on, it's pretty exciting. This past November, Heather Smith with Wiedek alerted staff to new technical assistance grant opportunity from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. And for those of you who don't know, Robert Wood Johnson has helped in the past as well with our Invest Health Initiative in Eau Claire. And 880 cities who were helping winners become national leaders in winter city planning, design and programming, and that grant is called Winter Mission. Under the coordination of the Eau Claire City County Health Department, leadership of the public health specialist Audrey Burner, Eau Claire became one of 62 cities who applied for the Winter Mission grant. Additionally, several other participants helped with the application, including councilmember Bergy, including our health, health department director Lisa Giesi, Mr. Jake Rassi with the University of Eau Claire Government and Community Relations Specialist, Stephanie Ponel, Visit Eau Claire Marketing Manager, and Scott Allen, our Community Development Director. Last month, three folks were able to go up to Canada, Saskatchewan and Saskatchewan. I'm pretty sure I'm not the only one who has trouble with that.
Say that.
And Saskatchewan. And at that conference, it was announced that Eau Claire was actually one of the three cities selected for Winter Mission. The Winter City Vanguard, which is the, which is this plaque that I'm holding here this evening. Two other cities, Buffalo, New York, and Leadville, Colorado, were also selected for this prestigious award. So, over the next two years, Eau Claire will participate in groundbreaking Winter Mission program, including community engagement, pilot projects, and the creation of a unique winter city strategy. According to the 880 cities, Winter Mission aims to combat social isolation as well as increased physical activity in the winter. And it's for all residents, no matter of their age, or their ability, socioeconomic background, or ethno-cultural background. Starting next week, Eau Claire will launch the first ever community engagement of Winter Mission events. And it's going to start with winter after hours, March 7th. So, stay tuned for that, there's going to be a lot going on moving forward. And that's going to be happening at Pinehurst Park, culminating with the official kickoff of the event of the Visit Eau Claire Experience Center, at the Experience Center, the evening of Friday, March 8th. Over the past several weeks, Eau Claire team has been doing one of, a lot of, well, they've been doing a lot of things, but one of the biggest is helping to build collaborative team project partners. So, they're all working together and reaching out to the community. And this team includes Volume One, Alcentro, it includes Among Mutual Assistance Associations, local businesses, City of Altoona, just to name a few of the different partners that they're working with to make this successful. So, if you are a Winter Mission project partner, which I think all of you are, if there's any others that are here this evening, please be sure to join us for recognition. And thank you all for the incredible energy that's gone into helping to bring this forward into our community. It's absolutely an exciting time. And especially with all the snow that we have on the ground right now, I think our community just recognizes the need that it, that we have to make sure that winters are still a time where we're able to reach out, build community, and make our, our community safe, fun, and livable. So, wonderful, and congratulations to all of you for the incredible work on getting this. Does someone want to say a few words?
Briefly, if that's okay.
Yeah.
We have hats.
Oh, yes.
Were they called tuques? Who knew, they're called tuques. Scott has a tuque.
I didn't get to go to Canada, I unfortunately had to be in Florida that weekend, but they did okay. Thank you so much Acting President Orthman, the city council, for this recognition. 880 cities gets its name from the idea that whether you're eight years old or 80 years old, the built environment of the city needs to be able to accommodate the recreation and social activity that it takes to move the social determinants of health. I think this can build really well in our participation in the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's Invest Health Initiative. And we've seen, we all know the incredible growth and change that's happened in Eau Claire over the last central, several years. You've all been a part of that. We are now identifying how the things that bring us together in summer, the rivers, the bridges, the parties, the music, how can we prevent that from driving us apart in winter, keeping us isolated? It's no small task, and we've got a great team assembled, thank you so much for your support. We look forward to engaging the community to best understand what works about our winter, what events are good templates, and how ultimately, we can make this a better place for everybody to live. So, thank you all so much for your support. Thank you for your work.
Yeah. Yeah, we. Two hats together. The first act of collaboration was all the snow.
Yes.
I know, it's really bright. There you go. Okay, that's good. Okay, ready? Okay. Andrew, get a little closer. One, two, three, we'll do one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Good job. Thank you all, all for your hard work. Going to move then to our business agenda this evening. First up are the alley improvements. Item number 13 is a final resolution approving a project and levying special assessments on the alley east of Fifth Avenue, Congress Street to Fulton Street. We had our presentation last evening on this item from Mr. Solberg. Are there any follow up questions regarding this alley improvement for its move? Any follow up? Seeing none, then on a motion by councilmember Emmanuel, seconded by councilmember Weld, item number 13 has been moved. Is there discussion on the alley improvement? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Rager?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Orthman? Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Aye.
That item passes. We'll move then to item 14, this is regarding street improvements on Eddie Lane and Melby Street. Again, this is a final resolution which would bring special assessments and work on utility improvements on the following streets, Eddie Lane, Star Avenue to Hastings Way, and Melby Street, Anderson Drive to Hastings Way. This had a presentation as well last evening. Is there any, are there any questions from council regarding this final resolution? Councilmember Graggert?
Thank you Acting President Orthman. I guess I would appreciate if Mr. Solberg brought up a map of the, or a design of the Melby Street portion of the projects in front of us tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Solberg.
Good afternoon. It looks good right there, thank you.
Thank you. I guess my question was, can you maybe describe the trail connections on the east side of this project? That along Melby Street? Because I know it's only been maybe about three or four years since the Melby Street Trail was, was created. And my understanding is it's on the south side of Melby Street until you get to the the frontage road or on the east side of Hastings Way, and then it goes, it crosses to the north?
Correct. The project that was constructed between the frontage road and out to the 53 freeway does, the trail does lie on the south side of Melby Street, but the crossing, for the crosswalk with, that was existing is on the north side of the intersection. So, it does cross over, and then it utilizes the sidewalk, and it goes, goes to the west, on the north side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Solberg. There are follow up questions from council regarding this project? Seeing none. Then on a motion by councilmember Beaton, seconded by councilmember Graggert. Are you okay seconding? This item has been moved and is open for discussion or amendments? Do you have anything? Councilmember Graggert?
Thank you Acting President Orthman. I am kind of exploring this a little bit last night. The idea that there's a, I guess the fact that there's a trail that's coming in from the, from the east side of this project on the, on the north side of Melby Street. And it's really great that we're able to fit these sidewalks in because there's no sidewalks at all right now. But I, one thing I asked last night was whether it would be possible to fit in a a trail on the north side in the, in the right of way and upgrade the sidewalk to a trail. So, it appeared that that was quite possible, at least until you get close to the railroad track where it'd have to get down to six feet. So, right now is being proposed to be five feet. And I do have an amendment that would allow for the portions of the trail that are on the north side, or the portions of the sidewalk on the north side to be upgraded to a blacktop trail of eight feet instead of the sidewalk. So, I'd like to make a motion to amend the, the project to be able to include that. And that would be from the Old Abe State Trail to the, the entrance to the gas station. And one of the reasons for it, in addition to the fact that there's a trail on the east side, is that there's no bike lanes that go through, that'll take you through the, the railroad track because it's just such a, such a narrow right of way there that we have to work with. So, this would help kind of fill in a bicycle facility gap. So, I'm going to pass out a copy in each direction, or copies in each direction for my colleagues on the council. And if perhaps someone could make sure we have one in front of the screen as well with the language of the, the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Graggert. If I could ask if there's a second at this time? Councilmember Beaton, seconding the motion. Do you want to speak to it first? Councilmember Graggert?
Sure, yeah, I, I think I probably just explained it as much as I probably could, but just my use of this area has been, you know, frequent enough that I understand quite, quite a few of the needs in the area. And the fact that we've been able to develop the Melby Street Trail makes me feel that we should try to continue it through this project. Since there isn't a bike lane through the railroad track.
Thank you, Councilmember Graggert. Councilmember Beaton, did you want to speak to it? No? I guess I had a question for the mover, is, had, was there a cost differential on, a cost difference on doing it this way?
I'm told that there's not a cost difference because we're moving from it being a concrete sidewalk to a, to an asphalt trail.
Are there councilmembers who wish to speak on this amendment? Councilmember Strobel?
I'll support this amendment, I think we heard last night that it was revenue neutral, and we, you know, matching up an eight foot trail with that other trail. And I think we did this last year by shopco, so I will support it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Rager?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Orthman? Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
That amendment passes. We move back to the item on the table, which again is the Eddie Street and Melby Street Reconstruction Projects, levying special assessments. Any further comments before we vote on this? Any at this time? So, we will take a vote, again, this is with the amendment that just passed from councilmember Graggert and Beaton. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emmanuel?
Aye.
Rager?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Orthman? Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
That item passes. We move then to item 15, this resolution orders sidewalk repair on, in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 66.0907, on the following streets, Eddie Lane, Star Ave. to Hastings Way, and Melby Street, Anderson Drive to Hastings Way. And again, this is the resolution that would order the sidewalk repair. Are there any questions specifically on this item before we move it? Seeing none, then on a motion by councilmember Bergy, and seconded by councilmember Christopherson, this item has been moved. Is there a discussion before we vote? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rager?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Orthman? Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move to item 16, this is regarding grants. This is specifically a resolution accepting and appropriating a recreational trail grant from the Department of Natural Resources for the use along downtown River Rock between the Confluence and Lake Street. As a note, this project, because it would amend our budget, needs a two third vote of the elected members or eight affirmative votes required for adoption. Mr. Quahla, good afternoon.
Good evening. Some months back, we applied for a, a grant that is distributed by the Department of Natural Resources to help cover the cost of, of our recreational trails. We were recently notified that the grant for the trail section from the Haymarket Plaza to Lake Street would, was awarded up to $45,000. And this particular item on your agenda is to appropriate funding for such. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those.
Councilmembers have questions on this trail, the design of it? Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, the, that section of trail is included in the CIP for construction this summer, correct?
That's, that's my understanding, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions on this trail grant? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Quahla.
You're very welcome.
Did you want to present on the next item too?
Sure. Item number 17 is in regards to a similar grant that is tied to the Recreational Trails Act that is managed by the Department of Natural Resources. We have also been notified that we're, we have been awarded $45,000 to repair the stairwell from the Birch Picnic Area on the east end of Half Moon Lake, which extends up into Carson Park. You may know that those, those stairs have deteriorated quite a bit in the last several years to the point where we have to block them off, they're essentially becoming unsafe. We do have our city engineering departments assisting us with design. We will certainly want to recreate the look and ambiance of that stairwell as there is a sitting bench halfway up the, up the, the bank. And we'll, it'll make, after the completion of the causeway, it'll really make a nice connection to get to the upper side of Carson Park. And again, $45,000 for that will be assistance from the DNR for that grant.
Thank you, Mr. Quahla. Are there questions from council regarding this Birch Street grant? Or, sorry, not Birch Street, Birch Picnic Area step rehabilitation? Councilmember Graggert?
Thank you Acting President Orthman, thank you, Mr. Quahla. I was wondering, the design of this staircase, I, I know right now it's made up mostly of stone, which is like pretty cool. It feels like you're going up into a castle or something. So, I guess I was wondering what kind of material are we going to use to reconstruct the stairwell?
It likely would not be stone, it would more than likely be a form liner replicating the land in stone, which would be, would be concrete. the land in stone, which would be, would be concrete. It would, it would certainly have the look of the stone that is there though.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. And this is more of a, a financial question, so I'm happy to volley this to somebody else if you feel that's better. So I understand this is, um, a cost share grant. Um, is this coming out of the CIP or is this?
Correct. For this particular project, it's in our, our Fund four fifty, which is the Parks Capital Improvement Plan. We had budgeted to, uh, fifty thousand dollars for this project and this, the, this will match it to, well, nearly half of forty-five thousand dollars, which will more than, more than, or hopefully will cover the whole cost with that, that half from the Department of Natural Resources.
Sure, thank you. So the way it was budgeted was anticipating, crossing our fingers that you'd receive some matching funds?
Yes, ma'am.
And then, um, in the event that, uh, the city budgets for, let's say, a CIP project and grant dollars exceed what the city's, uh, previous commitment was, what happens to then the balance? So let's say if there's five thousand dollars remaining, where does that go?
I believe that, that would go into the overall, uh, citywide trail program. It would still be earmarked for, for trail work and that would carry over, I believe. Nope, I'm, I'm lying to you.
No, you're trying your best.
Thank you, Jay.
Um, it, it depends upon the type of, um, we've got kind of two different types of funds within our, uh, within our CIP. We have those, uh, projects that lapse, um, at the end of every year and we've got those projects that, um, that, um, are non-recurring projects, uh, that have three years to spend the money. Uh, our trail program is, is a recurring program, happens year after year. Those funds at the end of the year lapse and just go back into the, uh, fund balance, uh, for, uh, for that particular capital fund. And then they have to be re-appropriated, um, the next year, uh, for, um, if they're, if they're going to be spent on another capital, capital project.
May I ask a follow-up, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So what happens if, um, you didn't receive the grant and, you know, you've got budgeted fifty thousand dollars, let's say, and it really would cost about ninety thousand? What happens then?
We would, we would, we would come back with additional budget requests in our capital program for the following year.
Okay, thank you very much. And congrats for the grant and thanks for your work on that. I know a lot of the city departments work really hard to, um, stretch the dollars. So thank you for looking for those opportunities.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Then on a motion by council member, um, yeah, item number sixteen, then on a motion by council member Strobel, seconded by council member Anderson, item sixteen, this resolution is regarding our, uh, recreational trail grant along the Confluence down to Lake Street has been moved. Are there, uh, any comments, motions, thoughts or feelings on this item before we vote? I see none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burgy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move then to item seventeen. This resolution again is accepting and appropriating recreational trail, trail grant from the Department of Natural Resources for the Birch Picnic Area Step Rehabilitation at Carson Park. Um, on a motion then by council member Catherine Emanuel, Emanuel, and seconded by council member Weld, this item will be moved. Is there any discussion on this step rehabilitation program? Seeing no, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burgy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
And that item passes. We move to item eighteen on our business agenda this evening. This is an agreement, specifically an agreement, um, and memo of understanding between the City of Eau Claire and Eau Claire American Baseball. Sir Jeff Pippinger is here this evening with details. Good evening.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Acting Council President Worthman. Before the City Council is a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Eau Claire and the Amer- Eau Claire American Baseball. This MOU is for the use of Fairfax Park baseball fields for the term of five years with an automatic five-year extension. This memorandum of understanding includes the responsibilities of the city, the Eau Claire American Baseball, scheduling, field preparation, concession sales and operations, capital improvement goals, and insurance requirements indemnification and hold harmless provisions. The Department of Community Services finds that this partnership will be beneficial to the parties and the community as a whole by providing valuable recreational programming to the youth of Eau Claire. The applicant is not here tonight, but, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Councilmembers have questions regarding this agreement? See any? Thank you again. Thanks for your work on this. Then on a motion by council member Beaton, seconded by council member Gregor, item number eighteen has been moved, open for discussion? No discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Burgy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emmanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that item passes. We are then on to item nineteen on our business agenda. This is a resolution approving appointments and reappointments for various boards, commissions, and committees, namely RDA appointments. Um, my apologies, RDA appointments require, as a note, they require four-fifths vote of the city council for adoption. Bring it up here real quick. So on this item, uh, we met, uh, our advisory committee on appointments met last week, I believe it was, and recommended, um, the following appointments for the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee. Um, a new appointment to an unexpired three-year term of, for Kyle Broliard. Uh, we have a new appointment of an unexpired term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty of J.J. Hendrickson, and a new appointment to an unexpired three-year term, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, of Scott, Scott Larson. We also recommend, uh, to the city council, the, for the redevelopment authority, a new appointment to a five-year term to expire December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three of Wayne Willie. And for the South Barstow Business Improvement District, new appointments to three-year terms, again, on the South Barstow Business Improvement District, these would be up in December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one of Julia Johnson, Vicky Maluski, and Aaron Salmon. And lastly, the Waterways and Parks Commission, we recommended a new appointment to an unexpired three-year term of Joseph Mauer. Are there any questions that council members may have of, um, the appointments committee members, which is myself, um, council member Beaton, council member John is not here this evening. Do you have any questions regarding, um, our appointments? Councilmember Gregor?
Uh, thank you, Acting President. Um, I guess I was wondering, um, one of the redevelopment authority positions was left, uh, open. Is that correct? And, and maybe we could describe, uh, the nature of that position on the RDA and, and our need to fill it and maybe the type of candidates we're looking for so we can maybe get the word out about it?
So I'll address that. Um, we, we, uh, we did meet and review all of the candidates. Um, and the way that, that it works with RDA is that, um, those who serve continue to serve until we find a replacement. So it's not as if there's a gap right now. Um, and just given the field of candidates and the expertise, we wanted to try and see if we could broaden out, um, for, for more applicants. So, um, I can kind of, and maybe work with our city manager as well, who's been doing a lot of hard work to get the word out, but um, our hope is to have more applicants and, um, potentially look for different expertise. So we left that, we decided not to appoint for both positions this time, but we meet every month to two months and there's a likelihood that next month we will appoint. Councilmember Be- do you want to add to that question?
Um, no, I, that's a, a good summary.
Okay.
Um, I did have a, a question though.
Sure.
Maybe, uh, Acting President Worthman, you might be able to help jog a memory. Um, I, I remember a different appointment for Waterways and Parks, uh, Commission. Um...
Yeah, I think maybe we could, I would actually like to call for just a quick, um, couple-minute recess to, to make sure that we're getting that correct. Um, we'll work with Kathy Merle and read adjourn in a couple of minutes if, if the council's okay with that. So I think, um, we just want to make absolutely sure that, uh, uh, the decision was the one that we had, that we had made. And so we're going to actually request to postpone that specific, uh, Waterways and Parks recommendation. Um, I think both councilman Beaton and I, uh, just want to make sure and, and work with, um, Ms. Merle too, to make sure that we're, um, uh, all on the same page about that, uh, suggestion. But we will have another meeting coming up in probably a month or two and so we'll make sure we get that one, um, squared away. So, um, I suppose, um, we'll, we'll move this and then, um, it would be, councilmember Strobel, do you have a question, um, before we move it?
I, I do, thank you.
Sure.
Um, just, uh, um, maybe the redevelopment authority again.
Sure.
What, do you look for specific qualifications for these individuals? Um, I know it's, it's maybe not specified there, like, you know, Landmarks Commission is pretty much specified. You have to have a couple architects, a real estate person, blah, blah, blah. Redevelopment authority, really, I don't, I don't know. Are there any actually qualifications that, that you guys sort of look to when you're looking for somebody on those committees?
I'll, I'll answer that question. Um, I think the, the biggest qualification is, is knowing the finances, especially in a TIF district and, and how, um, you know, how to work with, uh, increment. Um, and I think obviously, you know, we kind of look for that first and foremost, but then if, um, it's someone in the lending community or a community that's relevant, um, uh, organization or, or business that's relevant to, um, to the redevelopment authority is sort of the, the other big qualification. Um, and, and beyond that, we've also talked about the, um, you know, hoping that there's a sort of a, a focus or an interest in looking at how we include more affordable housing as well. Um, and so those are just a few of the, the discussions that we've had at Appointments Committee about things that we're looking for, um, in, in approving someone for this. Councilmember Beaton?
Just to add to that, um, it's, it's our understanding in, um, communication with staff that, um, staff has been, um, searching for, um, somebody who kind of fits that bill with, um, with, you know, the right type of experience to bring a strong, um, sort of perspective to the RDA that, and that, uh, and, and with sort of an affordable housing lens, um, and an equity lens. But, uh, it's been a, a challenge to find somebody living within this city who's willing. Um, and so certainly if, if anybody has any, uh, recommendations for the committee and for staff, please bring them forward.
Councilmember Brie Emanuel?
President Worthman, um, I would just add on to that, that the, the RDA has been able to function very well with, um, people who are willing to serve, who have a real passion for this community and so they do continue to serve. Um, but we are governed by a Wisconsin state statute and I can read a little bit of the qualifications that, um, have to go into the criteria. Um, it says that, um, the appointing power shall give due consideration, um, I'll skip to, uh, a couple of the descriptive words, to, from the general public, labor, industry, finance, business group, and civic organizations. And that appointees shall have sufficient ability and experience in related fields, especially in the fields of finance and management, to assure efficiency in the redevelopment program, its planning and direction.
Helpful. Thank you. Does that help an- answer your question? Councilmember Strobel?
It does. And then, and then the follow-up question of that, of course, is, um, um, the, the appointment there, I, what, what qualifications, you know, in the past, I think, and you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the Appointments Committee sort of sent out the applications that the, the people filled out to us in the past. I could be wrong, but I, I didn't see anything on this applicant, you know, in order for me to make a judgment. Um, is there anything you have you can share or?
Do we, I, I think I'll, I'll direct that to manager or to Ms. Merle. Do we send out the packet?
I believe the packet went out to the full council in addition to the council member, or the advisory committee members.
So I, I believe that packet does go out to the full council. Do other council members, have other council members seen the, the packet of appointments? No? Okay. Um, oh, I suppose, um, you know, I, I'll, you know, we can, if, if, if there's a desire to postpone, once this has been moved, we can make that, um, but, and, and to, to get more information, but, councilmember Beaton?
Um, so your point is well made, uh, councilmember Strobel, and, um, the, uh, that maybe something that we can take up in the committee. Um, but I, uh, uh, and are, are you asking specifically about Mr. Willie or, or just any of the applicants?
Yes, and the old, you know, all of them, I guess.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, your, your mic's on.
Um, yeah, we used to get, you know, I, I know they fill out the applications for the city and we used to get, get those emailed to us. We could at least have an idea.
Yeah. Okay.
My understanding is that it went out.
Okay. So, uh, Ms. Merle is, is clarifying that, that the packet did go out, but you may not have seen it in your emails. Um, I think if there's a desire to postpone, that, that's certainly okay. Um, if council, council would like to take these up in two weeks, um, and have a look over the packet, that's totally fine. The, um, you know, I think, I think that's okay. So we'll, let's move the item and then we'll take up that. Um, councilmember, uh, Beaton and myself, we'll move this, um, list of recommendations. Floor is open. Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I, I do know I've received this packet in the past, so I, I do recall reading about most of the folks, um, because they had applied in some cases more than a year ago. Um, and I'm very comfortable with, with all of them. And, uh, I did, for, for Mr. Wil- Willie, for example, for RDA, um, I did recommend to a member of the RDA that he would be a good choice. Um, so I am familiar with his background, but, um, but I, I'm certainly fine if, if folks feel like there's more time that's needed, um, to be able to, to research, um, what, what the applicants have put forward, uh, when they filled out the Citizen Resource Bank forms, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Yeah, I'm looking back in the email and I can see that this, um, Advisory Committee on Appointments packet was sent to the entire council, but you may have, may have not seen it in your, in, in inbox. Do councilmembers, um, would you like to postpone this item? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I would be, uh, I would prefer to vote on it tonight. We did, everybody received a packet dated on February seventh, two thousand and nineteen with the full packet of the Advisor Committee on Appointments. Um, so I do feel that, uh, council has had more than sufficient notice to review the materials. And also, um, you know, I, I, I trust my colleagues on their vetting process and I respect and appreciate the work that they've done there. Um, sounds like there's some clarification needed just around one of the, uh, uh, nominated, um, appointees, but other than that, I'd be prepared to vote on this, this evening.
Okay. Councilmember Strobel?
I would just like to postpone the RDA for two weeks.
Okay, is that a motion to pull that consideration separate?
That, that is.
Okay. Do you have a second? Is there a second to do RDA separate? Councilmember Anderson, would you like to speak to it? Councilmember Strobel?
No, I ju- I just, um, I guess I, I didn't have the email and I can't, can't seem to find it. And so I wouldn't mind, you know, two weeks, um, if that's not going to hurt anything, just to review the qualifications of the RDA member.
Okay. Further discussion on this motion to separately consider, well, I suppose, do we have to vote on, uh, separating this? Um, city attorney?
Help me out separating what this?
Um, councilmember Strobel wants to separate, um, the RDA consideration separately. He wants to take that up separately. Want to pull Waterways too.
Right. Uh, I think you can...
I think you can, you can kind of divide the question like that by your
Okay.
declaration or by, by the request of any member.
Okay.
So I think you're fine.
So, um, so that we're clear, what we'll do is, um, we're going to vote on, uh, the recommendations minus RDA and minus Waterways and Parks. Uh, Waterways and Parks and RDA are being, actually, they're both, we'll keep them three separate. RDA and Waterways and Parks are both being recommended for postponement, but we'll first just take up the recommendations um, that are not being considered for postponement, which is Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, South Barstow. So on those two, um, we're going to take up a vote to accept the recommendations of the Advisory Committee. Does everyone understand that? Just on those two? Okay. Um, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye. Sorry, I didn't turn your lights on. Then we will move to consider postponement of RDA, which was a motion made by Councilmember Strobel and Anderson. Is there any discussion on that item before we vote? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Uh, I will be voting no on that, um, in reviewing the, um, nominee's, um, credentials. It fits very well within state statute of this person is an investment portfolio manager, has experience in wealth management, has, um, experience, um, uh, as in the finance world as a banker, a trust officer, as well as having educational background in economics, which plays a big role in, uh, these decision makings, plus a wealth of, um, civic leadership, including faith-based communities, sports, um, food security. There's no reason in my mind to, to, uh, to delay this for this individual. So I'm, I, I think it's helpful just to, um, advance this.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Beaton?
Um, thank you. Um, I, I normally I would, I would say, um, I'm always up for taking a little bit more time. Um, uh, we should maybe consider that, um, members who are trying to leave, uh, their appointment would, um, would need to stay in order to, until we, we reappoint their seat. And so, um, so consider, a, a, as you're making the, your decision, consider that, um, you know, there are folks who are ready to, to move on to something else, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Is there any further discussion on the motion to postpone this specific item? Councilmember Strobel?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. That motion has been withdrawn, so we still have to vote to approve it though. So could we get a motion, um, for, um, approval of this? Councilmember Emanuel? Seconded by Councilmember Beaton to approve the recommendation specifically on RDA. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll. This is specifically just on RDA, the RDA appointment.
Councilmember Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
And that item passes, then I would like to make a motion, uh, and seek a second to postpone the Waterways and Parks appointment until the next meeting. Uh, Councilmember Beaton is seconding. Is there any discussion on that item? Seeing none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bergy?
Aye.
Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
And that passes. We move then, and thank you all. And again, um, if, if I could recommend, uh, councilmembers who want to work on helping to get out the word in the community, um, please be in touch with our city manager, um, who is, and, and staff who are also doing their, uh, work to, to make sure that the word gets out, um, and see how you can plug in and, and help. It's, it's really a team effort. Uh, we want to make sure we have as many applicants as possible. It's always better to have more applicants, um, for any of these positions. So thank you for, um, offering to help. We'll move then to our ordinances for action this evening. First up is item number 20. This is an ordinance amending chapter 6.14 entitled, "The Keeping of Honeybees" of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Eau Claire. This item was postponed from our January 21st and 22nd City Council meeting. Do councilmembers this evening have questions on the ordinance as we heard presented last night? Any questions? I don't see any. Then on a motion by, I'm not even sure where, where we were, we'll just start again. Councilmember Gregor, seconded by Councilmember Bergy, this item has been moved. Is there discussion? Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Acting President. First of all, I appreciate the, uh, the compromise in regards to the, uh, consensus and the 40% um, within the neighborhoods. Um, my, my only concern is, and it more or less is just a, we'll end up being a recommendation, but, it is the same as it was last October when, you know, more or less we're removing the, the neighbor talking to neighbor, part of the equation. I think that it, it's worked in the past when the neighbors took the time to go out and, and knock on doors and introduce themselves and, and, and talk about their idea and talk about how it works and what it looks like and, and answer questions and, you know, I, I know it was mentioned several times last night in regards to the importance of neighbors talking to neighbors and what that means in regards to safety and crime. And, um, I think as a community, it's a win-win. Um, when we can put it, uh, in the neighbor's hands to, to, to work these things out and sort through them. I know my experience on planning commission, whenever someone comes before us in regards to a conditional use permit for our, for our in-home business, you know, the first question we always ask is have you spoken with your neighbors so that they understand what your business is and what it looks like? And so often they're, they're not taking that time. And then so often we're getting so many neighbors coming in and objecting. So again, I think it, it helps the, the beekeepers if they do take that time. And my only recommendation would be that if we can ask staff to, you know, either somehow recommend it, uh, to the applicant, whether it's put in big red letters, please talk to your neighbors. Um, or if it's part of the notice that's sent out, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not, but if, if the name of the applicant and their phone number could be there, so that if the neighbor does have questions, that they can refer to the neighbor, uh, with those questions. So really, I just want to get back to that idea and, but I understand too, it's almost spring or it will be spring sometime and we need to get moving on this, so.
Thank you. Thank you for those recommendations, Councilmember Weld. Further, uh, comments? Councilmember Kristofferson?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Um, I really appreciate the clarity, um, that has come to this ordinance as a result of all of the work and the, the conversation around it. I will, um, join Councilmember Weld in that idea of it's really nice to promote that connectivity, not only with our sidewalks, but with our relationships and with our conversation. I like the idea that maybe this letter that's mailed out would indicate who the licensed, uh, applicant might be. But, um, I'm, I'm really grateful that this is not asking that single, um, person who is, is not in favor coming to council for some kind of, um, decision. So I, I think that this is really, uh, good for our community. I think it, um, allows us to be connected with our, our food source and, um, is a good opportunity for families.
Thank you, Councilmember Kristofferson. Any further comments? Councilmember Strobel?
Um, thank you. And this is, this is for my fellow councilmembers. I just want to throw it out there and maybe get a little thought on it. I, I want to, just a couple of things I was thinking about and see if anybody else has the same thoughts or not. But under number five and six, and I asked a question about that last night, those large acreages, 10 acres but smaller than 49 acres, there, there can still be 49 hives. And then 49 acres and over. And the, the indication was really the only spots those could potentially be weren't necessarily private homeowners in the city, but, but potentially, uh, schools or school districts. It's, it's a lot of hives for me, um, especially, I, I thought of a couple of things. I thought about, well, either we limit it, the number of hives and maybe it wouldn't be such a big deal, or if in fact we're going to allow that many hives, then I wouldn't mind seeing us at least put the requirement back in there that we were talking about when they were in public parks about, um, enclosures and perimeters. And, and one of the things I was thinking about was like south middle school. So if, if they have a lot of hives there, um, you know, you have the American Baseball League, Fairfax Park is right there, this pool, um, you know, kids, kids are kids and, you know, is it possible some junior high kids might want to vandalize those hives someday and knock them over? If you knock them over, the bees are going to swarm. I, I don't know, I wouldn't, we don't have any requirements here and I wouldn't mind us, seeing us at least, if we're going to le, allow these, to at least require the enclosure. That's, that's my thought. And I'll wait to hear from my fellow councilmembers.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Councilmember Weld?
President, I, I guess I would support the, the movers intentions there, um, in regards more, more than anything, just the safety issue of it. Um, and if it is going to be kept, or if they are going to be kept in our schools and our school grounds, I, I think it'd be nice to have some parameters set so that there's an understanding there and some safeguards in the event that something does happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Weld. Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Um, I think Councilmember was, um, Strobel, was that a, um, a statement? It wasn't a motion just yet, is that correct?
It was just a discussion.
Okay. So I am not an expert on bees. Let me just fly that flag right out in front. You know, I, I would think that each school campus has to go through their own risk management process, um, on their own. And so I don't know what that looks like, but I also think about, um, I don't know how to say this, but sometimes I think we imagine some um, reality about, we'll say bees in this example, that, um, you know, they're out to, to hurt people. Sometimes, and of course if they were provoked, of course, who wouldn't and what creature wouldn't do that? But it seems that, you know, for the most part, um, you know, these are very docile creatures. They're, they're doing their work with their queen and, to be making additional, um, safety measures when a school is likely going to be doing their own risk, um, assessment. I, I, I think I'm, I know I'm comfortable just to, you know, let's try this out, let the schools work out those logistics, knowing that for the large majority, um, you know, bees are very docile worker bees.
Thank you, Councilmember Emanuel. I'll also follow up on that. Councilmember Strobel, um, so this, as you know, one of the leading, um, conversations has been the tech college that's looking at doing a class, which is specifically, um, you know, they were involved in the conversation about this. The, the, um, school, the Eau Claire School District has not expressed an interest to date. And I would assume that even if they did, that they would, as Councilmember Emanuel said, go through their own, um, safety precautions. But not only that, but you have to work on a entire checklist with the Health Department about whether your, uh, practice is safe or not, there's, our inspectors. Um, and so I think my feeling is that there's enough safeguards in here in the process of setting this up, that it's, it would be done in a safe manner, even if there was that, um, I think unlikely chance that a school, one of our schools would do it. I'm not talking about tech, but I'm talking about our Eau Claire area's school district. So I think that's, that's sort of my, what I would say. I would say the, the other thing is, is it the, the large acreage? This recommendation of one hive per acre is sort of a standard that that's essentially enough space for a, a bee colony, one, you know, one box essentially to be able to have enough to forage and that sort of thing. So that's where the one hive per acre comes from. But again, I think my sense is that if a school like South wanted to do this, there'd be a lot of, uh, proactive sort of safety measures put in place by the school district. And then they would be working directly with our, our Health Department to make sure that it's, that it's safe. So I hope that kind of answers the question too. Councilmembers have other, um, comments? Uh, Councilmember Bergy?
Thank you. Yeah, my understanding from sitting on the Board of Health when we talked about this was that was more designated towards CBTC and their program. So I really don't remember any conversations about elementary schools, middle schools, high schools. So and another point too is I know the Health Department did a, a lot of vetting through this ordinance. So I do trust their judgment as well, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Bergy. Any further comments before we potentially vote or if Councilmember Strobel has an amendment? Councilmember?
No, no amendment, just, uh, th, th, thank, uh, thank, uh, staff and, and everybody here, council as well. When we worked on this and, and we, uh, we came through with some suggestions and they came back with a, um, a resolution that sort of addressed all those. And I'm, I'm very happy that we, um, have taken the bees out of the parks, uh, for now as well. So I will support this.
Thanks. Uh, seeing no further desire for comment, Clerk, please call the roll on this ordinance.
Councilmember Kristofferson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes. We move to our item on the agenda, which is item 21. This is regarding our dockless bicycle share program. This ordinance would create chapter 5.64 entitled Dockless Bicycle Share and amend section 10.08100 entitled Parking. Last evening, um, Mr. Ivory, um, Ms. Stromberger had a presentation for us and we went through a lot of different details at that point. Do councilmembers have follow-up questions, um, regarding the presentation that we heard last night on the dockless bicycle share program? Any questions? Okay, I already see a few coming. Councilmember Gregor, do you want to go first?
Oh, sure. Um, thank you, Acting President. I think that, uh, I guess I have a question about a timeframe that we are proposing here for, for companies to be able to, to bring and operate, um, a dockless bicycle share system. So, I guess the month of November kind of came to mind as a, as a possibility of a way to, to extend the season a bit, of bicycle share. So I guess, wondering if staff had, uh, any thoughts about whether that would be something that would be that much different than the fact that March is included? Um, and the temperatures are roughly the same and the s, snow, um, except for maybe this year is probably, uh, the snow cover is about the same between November. Um, so uh, I guess from an operational standpoint and from an ordinance standpoint, I was wondering if there was a thought on that? On adding November?
Our city manager Peters?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Uh, staff talked about this this morning and we would not see any, uh, operational, you know, challenges with extending it through November.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bergy, did you have a question?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I was wondering about, um, how the locations of the bike share places were, um, identified and if there's flexibility with that. I was just looking at the map, thinking about the north side and there's not many, well, there's nothing on the northeast side unless there's something under this graph. And there's only one on the way by the dog park, which is great, um, sun debt. But I just wonder if there's flexibility with that and how it was chosen.
Um, Ms. Ness, do you want to address that or Ms. Ivory?
Uh, Mr. Ivory and myself looked at different public locations throughout the city, um, plotted different, uh, public properties, looked at community parks, worked with the Community Services Department, Parks and Rec Department on identifying which parks we thought would be a good location at, um, just to start out with. And we decided to include the community parks for a starting point and then work with the vendors. Um, we also, when we looked at locations, looked at the transit routes to see if there's any way to include the last mile. Um, and decided that as a vendor comes onboard, it's something that we'd be able to work with them on potentially identifying locations with our transit group, um, if it would be a good fit for their company to have locations, uh, outside of what's if it would be a good fit for their company to have locations outside of what's desired or shown on these maps. These are just starting points and then also, the companies are not limited to these locations either, they can contract with private properties, private businesses to locate on those locations as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there further questions from Ms. Ness or Ms. Ivory? I guess I wanted to follow up on one, Ms. Ness, and I had emailed with Stromberger earlier, but regarding the lighting on the bikes. So I understand that it's state law that anyone who operates a bicycle is supposed to have the proper lighting at night, but I still am a little unclear about whether that's the bicycle that has to have it or whether the rider themselves has to have it. Do you know that?
I'll let Janice answer that.
Sure, so state law requires either one. It says that the bike has to be equipped with it or the rider can have similar equivalent lighting on themselves, presumably, you know, on their helmet or something like that. So it's an either or situation.
So, and we just say that through this program, you need to follow state law, but we don't specify, we just say follow state law?
That's correct.
Okay, that helps, thank you. Are there any further questions that council may have regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, then on a motion by Councilmember Christopherson, seconded by Councilmember Strobel. Okay. This item has been moved and is open for discussion. Councilmember Strobel?
Believe it or not, I'd like to propose an amendment. Under the licensee requirements, and then if I get a second, I can speak to it, but I would like to add a different one as number one and move them all down one number, but number one, I'd like to see in bold letters on their app to their riders, no riding on downtown sidewalks. That's my amendment.
Okay. Do we have a second for the amendment that Councilmember Strobel is proposing? Any second? Councilmember, I think we'll go with Anderson on this one. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you, it's just, we're trying really hard right now downtown to let the bikers and the skateboarders know that they're not supposed to be on the downtown sidewalks. We've got the applications going on the crosswalks and on the poles and the majority of these bikes are probably going to get used downtown. I mean, the racks are going to be downtown and that. And just to refer people to local ordinance and stuff is not going to allow them to know that they shouldn't be riding on the sidewalk. And then down number five, they say no motor engagement operating on the sidewalks. Well, the fact is our ordinance doesn't allow bicycles to be driven on downtown sidewalks. And so I think it's only fair for us to require it on the application so that the people that are renting these bikes know that they shouldn't be riding on the downtown sidewalks. And that's, it's a safety concern and I just think it's more fair to the users too, that, because it really doesn't specify anywhere in here, you can't ride bikes on the downtown sidewalks. So that's my reason.
Just, would you be able to repeat your amendment?
Pardon?
Would you be able to repeat your amendment?
Yes, I would add, either as number one on the license requirement under 5.64.050 on page 74, I would add either in number, as number one rule, or either in bold over all the rules, just no riding on downtown sidewalks.
So that would, you're saying that, Councilmember Strobel, you're saying that that would just be in the ordinance, but are you requesting that it be listed in the app or any, you want it to be listed in the app as well?
In the app, because that's one of our requirements here in the application, that we're gonna, the applicant's gonna have to put in their app to the people that ride the bikes, all these different rules they have here, please wear a helmet, yield to pedestrians and sidewalks, those types of things, but it doesn't say anywhere on here there's an ordinance against riding bikes on downtown sidewalks, please don't do that.
Further comments on the amendment being proposed by Councilmember Strobel? Councilmember Gregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I do think it is important to point this out to people because it obviously is a major safety issue to have bicyclists riding on the sidewalks downtown. But I guess, I was wondering maybe if staff would have a recommendation that is in line with our Walk Your Wheels program, that maybe is along those lines in terms of messaging, that is maybe a little bit less harsh, although obviously it's a serious matter. So something to the effect of please walk bicycles on downtown sidewalks or something like that could be a substitute for, you know, just saying no, considering that we've tried to roll out a program that is a little bit more positive in messaging, I guess.
I would accept that as a friendly.
Okay.
Councilmember Anderson? You accept it as a friendly too?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, are there further discussion on the amendment being proposed regarding the rules? Did you want to add to it or? City Attorney Nick?
Yeah, as long as we have a little discretion in kind of crafting that, but like what I quickly wrote down was, you know, walk your wheels on downtown sidewalks and wear required or something like that. I think the point of all those is there might be some ability to modify the exact language when it actually hits an app, but it's making sure we communicate that information, we communicate it accurately, knowing that our maps on where you can ride or where you need to walk your wheels change from time to time and I think that's the concept and we'll make sure we, if this is passed, that we'll get that in there.
Any further comments on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, we're going to vote on it then. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
And that amendment passes? We're back to the ordinance on the table as amended. Any further comments, amendments, thoughts, council? Councilmember Gregor?
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Worthman. I just wanted to show appreciation certainly for all the work that has gone into this before I offer a few amendments that would help strengthen it, I believe. But the, but certainly I think I, like at the, at a minimum, I want to recognize the fact that I think students really have been, students at UW Eau Claire have really been kind of the driving force behind this for quite a few years and obviously have had great allies on the council and among staff to explore this over the years too, but the technology has changed over time and the, and the needs of the community have changed and of the campus. And the campus has certainly started to be more active in our downtown as well. So I, so I think this is an appropriate way to go forward as to an ordinance that allows for dockless bicycle sharing and really still will be in many ways an experiment to see how it works here, although we've had, we've heard good things from other communities like Green Bay that are pretty similar to us. So I just wanted to acknowledge all the hard work that has gone into this and that it's really been driven by a lot of advocacy and a lot of need out there as well, I think, particularly from UW Eau Claire students and I think it'll be a tourism boon for the community as well and for businesses that are really sometimes struggling with how people can access their business, so. I do want to offer a few amendments out there, however. One of them I'll pass out would allow for the month of November to be included as a time to operate bicycle share in the city of Eau Claire. So I'm going to pass out what that would look like in the ordinance itself. So that would require that the, so the motion that I'd like to make would be that rather than the license period shall run from March 1 through October 31st, it would be March 1 through November 30th. And then later on, we would mention the month of, it would strike the month of November from the, from the licensee requirement, from the unlicensed time period.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Beaton, are you seconding this? Okay. Councilmember Gregor?
I can certainly explain the rationale here and I appreciate the time today having staff also consider this. The fact that right now the month of March is included, when, if this were to pass and we were to have a bike share company suddenly be able to spring up in two days, which is unlikely, they could actually start operating on Friday of this week, which is like pretty hard to imagine with all the snow. So like it really is up to the company to decide when it's, when it makes sense for them to roll out their bicycles. And also there's a number of provisions within here that make sure that a snow event is taken into account or that if it does snow, that the bikes need to be moved so that snow can be cleared. I think having the month of November really helps a lot in terms, because typically there isn't a lot of snow that really sticks around in the month of November like we're about to see in March. And then also it really does not get quite as cold, although it feels colder for some reason in November than it does in March, because 40 degrees feels a lot different in each month, but I think that there's good reason for, to leave it up to the company to decide when, within the month of November, they would want to take down operations or maybe it would even be in October, but one of the reasons for including November is that I think it'd be really great if people could ride the bicycles to the polls in the November election. So it improves access to our polling locations if the bicycle share system is still operating in November. So that's kind of my reasoning for this and putting that out there for folks for a discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Any further discussion on this amendment? Councilmember Strobel?
I'm prepared to support this, I'm just glad you didn't make it year round and so I'll support the November.
Councilmember Strobel, thank you. Any further comments before we vote? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
And that amendment passes. Councilmember Gregor, did you have another amendment you would like to make?
Yeah, thank you, Acting President Worthman. I do have another amendment, this one's a little bit more complicated. And this is actually an amendment not within the dockless bicycle share ordinance itself because there's actually a, included within this is an ordinance change to parking for bicycles at the very end of the document, so it'd be helpful for my colleagues to actually bring that up if they can. The
Parking provisions?
Yeah, so it's 5.6, or actually it's 10.08.100 for parking. And right now it's actually just, there's actually just one sentence in that that describes, as it's currently written in our ordinances, there's just one sentence that really describes our, you know, the do's and don'ts of parking a bicycle in the city of Eau Claire. So I understand certainly why we need to expand upon that, but I'm going to pass out changes that are essentially amending what the proposal is in our packet.
Okay.
And then I'll try to describe it and justify it.
Well, if you want to, if we could get it up on the screen and then if you want to
Oh yeah, end up on the screen, that would be great.
And justify it separately. Once it's been moved.
Yeah, I can describe the changes here, so
Okay.
In the, in the one that's in our packet that is, there's an addition at the beginning for, it adds A at the top that says that a bicycle should not be parked on the street, but I decided to clarify that, that the street is just the curb face to curb face area. And the reason why this is being, why this was added was because of the emergence of bicycle corrals within the city. So I, so we left that in there, but clarified what area we're talking about is the street. And then in, under B, striking upon a street, but actually including a lot of what was originally going to be striked in order to to kind of clear, to keep a lot of the original language that we had in our ordinance. The part that I'm not including in this amendment is C from the original one we have in our packet because it says that bicyclists should not secure their bicycle to a whole number of different objects like signs and poles. And the fact is right now, there's, I guess I could go into that more in the justification side, but that's, that's, the C on the old one is what I'm getting rid of and I can talk about why later. And then it keeps D and E, but it relabels them C and D.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. So I think you're moving, Councilmember Beaton, you're seconding? So the item's on the table and Councilmember Gregor, if you want to speak to it first, that'd be great with the justification.
Yeah, sure, thank you. So I guess the main reason for editing this is that the impetus for it came with the fact that we are rolling out potentially a bicycle share system that is dockless, that does not require or allow the bicycles to be locked to anything. Therefore, we do need to make sure we keep our sidewalks clear, we need to keep our streets clear so that the bicycles are not being parked in the way of anything. So it's important that we add some language and we've done that in both versions of this that kind of protects the public right of way, protects access for people using the bus, protects, you know, people who have mobility needs. So that's, so I think that's really important, but I guess the original version of this went a little too far, I think, for where we're, where I think the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee was really ready for, was really within the scope of their discussion after speaking with their chair today. It was, it was not really understood that these changes were going to be so broad as to impact the securing of all bicycles to various objects around the city. And I do think ultimately we should restrict, you know, the securing of bicycles to certain objects, but we kind of need to have that conversation, I think, in a bit more detail. And since bike share does not affix bicycles to objects, I think that's kind of a conversation for later. And then another reason for updating this parking section is the emergence of bicycle corrals. And I think that these amendments acknowledge the fact that bicycle corrals are typically placed on streets and we need to therefore, in that specific instance, allow a bicycle to be parked in the street. And so that's kind of where I'm at with that, as far as these, as far as justifying this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Strobel?
I wonder if we could have Ms. Ness come up and speak to this a little bit?
What's the, what's the nature of your question, Councilmember Strobel?
She presented the ordinance, so I have, I have questions on how it was represented. represented, what was it presented to, um, how this would be affected removing C in particular?
Okay. Ms. Ness?
Thank you. The removal of C, uh, from the parking section of the bicycle, um, C describes bikes should not be secured to any trees, signs, poles, public art, or other items in the public right of way other than a bicycle rack, corral, or similar designated location. The intent of that statement, uh, was really, we, we do have locations in the downtown area where bicycles are being chained to or locked to, uh, a decorative pole that we want to maintain, um, the integrity of the pole, uh, to trees, similar, similar situation. We want to be able to keep our trees, um, healthy in the downtown area and in areas around the city. And, and designating locations, better outlining where bicycles should be able to park within the right of way. With the Bike Share, as we discussed last night, they don't have to lock to, uh, a bike rack, but we could paint areas within the right of way for them to be placed and designated, um, sign locations to designate those locations. So that was really the intent of having C included.
And then if I may ask you a question on that, um, so C, C applies to all bikes, right?
Correct.
Not necessarily just the Bike Share. And, and you, you put this, um, amendment past the Business Improvement Districts as well and they all, they all saw the way it was, did they comment on any of it? Did they, they approve of it this way? I know you did take it to the South Barstow bid. Can you, because the businesses have all approved this where the, and I know why we're not doing it because of the decorative poles and that type of thing. So what, what did you get for feedback?
Positive feedback from the bids, um, especially with the relationship to the trees, not, not having bicycles chained or locked to trees, um, in the public art. I guess, uh, there were some questions asking for clarification with the location of bike racks and we do have a policy on how we locate bike racks within the right of way, certain spacing that bike racks need to be spaced, um, the distance from, uh, fire hydrant, um, safety issues like that, that we take into consideration when we place bike racks. So, um, those were a couple of the questions that we addressed at the South Barstow bid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ness? Further, uh, comments, discussion on this amendment? Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I, I certainly, um, understand why this, you know, since we're looking at the parking, uh, of bicycles right now as, you know, looking at making amendments that, I think it is something that we should do at some point is actually look at what we wanna restrict people from securing bicycles to, particularly trees. We really shouldn't be allowing that. The problem is, I guess, is that I think we could use more time to be able to analyze that specific piece of it, particularly because, well, I real recognize we're making progress on, on downtown bicycle parking and, in certain parts of our downtown. Not, not a lot on, there's really only one bike rack on, or only a few bike racks on Water Street right now, for example, where we maybe will be rolling out a lot more in the coming years, but right now, like ninety percent of the city, you could, you cannot find a bike rack for where you're going. That's like, like, so if we're gonna take Ballenger Street, for example, or Hastings, like South Hastings Way, um, there's a lot of parts of our city where there's, in, in virtually every residential area, that a bicyclist, bicyclist could not secure their bicycle legally in those entire, like, parts of the community. So, so we need to find a way to not only add more bike parking, but, but have some flexibility. There, the city of Minneapolis allows for bicycle parking on signs, for example, sign posts, but not on trees and not on light posts. So maybe there's a way to, to look at some other communities as to what they do and, especially the most, some of the most bicycle friendly communities in the country like Minneapolis, so. So that's the, really the reason for this. I, I'm totally interested in taking up the topic and I think the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory, uh, Committee is as well. It's just that when we're talking about Bike Share, which does not secure to anything, and we're talking about bike corrals, like, these are the, these are the more immediate amendments I think we should make, uh, at this time. But, um, when we're talking about securing bicycles to things, I think we need a little bit more, more input and discussion about that, so.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any further comments? Councilmember Emmanuel?
Uh, thank you, Acting President Worthman. I have a clarifying question. I think maybe Councilmember, uh, McGregor might be able to answer it. Is, just to help me, um, have a better understanding of the difference, um, between, uh, A, how it was worded before and now how it's worded, that what is the distinction between adding, um, the words that you did?
Councilmember McGregor?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. Um, the words that were added were curb face to curb face after the word street. That's an attempt to clarify that we're talking about just the street and not the sidewalks or the boulevard. So essentially, uh, in order to, for a, a bicycle corral to, to exist in the street, we, um, we're, um, we're basically creating a way for that to, to happen by having this added. Because right now technically our ordinance says you can't park a bike in the, in the street, so, because in, in B in my amendment, we take out upon a street.
Okay. Thanks for that. Does that help clarify, uh, Councilmember Emmanuel?
Sorry, I'm, I'm challenged in my city engineer, um, knowledge acquisition. There's another flag to fly. I guess I don't, I don't understand. I, what I seem, how I read it is that bikes need to be parked in a designated bike corral or something that's designated. I still don't understand the distinction. It's not something I need to get hung up on, but I just, I really don't understand that. Maybe a little educational moment for me.
Councilmember Anderson?
Uh, thank you, Acting President Worthman. Um, just to respond to, um, Councilmember Emmanuel, I also had trouble with this and I wanna make sure that my, what I eventually came to is accurate. I was reading a street curb face to curb face, meaning the only time you could park on the street is when you're in one of those little corrals that's like cut out from the street, so there's curbs on three sides of it. Is that basically what we're envisioning here?
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Could, would you be able to bring your microphone closer or pull it up a little bit? Just for, yeah, thank you. Further comments, further questions for Councilmember McGregor? Before we take a vote, Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I'm pretty sure Councilmember Gregor and I have to go have a bike ride and have a learning bike ride. So basically, if, if I understand correctly, then it's kind of like a, uh, let me just say in my words, you got a sidewalk and then you got like three walls, we'll say, that's, wall's probably not the right word, but basically designated boundary space, that's the space that you have to park in it. But in the event that maybe somebody wants to make a makeshift bike corral, maybe special event has some cones out, that designated location would cover that type of variance. Is that correct?
I think that staff may have to answer that question as to what the meaning of similar designated location is. Not sure that I, could be for a special event.
I'm assuming that's what it is, yeah. Similar designated location, I would assume that's, or like a special event corral or something, but, yeah, okay. That's correct. Further discussion on this item? Uh, Councilmember Weld?
Thank you, Acting President. Just a clarification on the walk your wheels zones, are they, does that include Water Street, Grand Avenue, and, and all of downtown, or is it more specific, or?
I'm gonna defer to, um, I defer to Mr. Solberg on, on that.
I guess my, my idea there is an offer friendly to the amendment to maybe get back to what Councilmember Strobel was hoping for and, and, and C in the amendment, it would state bicycles shall not be parked, uh, where are we? So I guess leaving the, the language that's already in the, the ordinance, bicycles shall not be parked, bicycles shall not be secured to any trees, signs, poles, or public art, or other items of public right of way in walk your wheels zones?
Councilmember, uh, Weld, if I'm, if I could ask, because, um, Councilmember Gregor has taken out that language in his amendment, I would ask if this fails or if it passes, if you wanna amend it once we've taken the, taken the vote? Because if this amendment fails, then I think your amendment's gonna fit better, uh, in changing it. Is that okay?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Councilmember Strobel?
In the past, we have amended amendments, haven't we?
Sure, but Councilmember Gregor is actually removing the current language in C that appears in our packet. He's, his amendment removes that language completely. Just because of that, because of his, the nature of his amendment, I think it makes more sense to add it in if this fails or add it in after it passes potentially, but it doesn't fit necessarily in C because he's amending C completely out. Councilmember Weld?
President, I guess I'd like to see if we can... I get, I would like to propose that, uh, I guess, add it as another. All right, so, uh, thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Maybe that would be the best way is to add, um, letter E to the proposed amendment stating that, um, mostly all the language that's in C in the original ordinance, um, but then would be added the wordage that, in all walk your bike, all walk your wheel zones.
Okay. So Councilmember Weld is proposing to amend this amendment that we have here by adding the language of C, which is in our packet, which describes not securing your bike to trees, signs, poles, public art, or other items, public right of way, other than bicycle rack, corral, or similar designated locations, and all walk your bike zones. He's requesting that that language be added as another item to this. It's seconded by Councilmember Strobel. Councilmember Weld, would you like to speak to it?
Sure. I, again, just getting back to the original intent, I think that the areas that we're really mostly concerned about, um, as far as protection of this, of, of our art and our, our posts and, and our trees and, and, um, in an area where we already are discouraging, you know, the riding of bikes, but I understand too that there's other parts of the community in the city that, those are probably the only options where we can lock our bike in some of the residential areas. So I, I, I agree with, with supporting that, but maybe just designating the, the walk your wheel zones as more or less protected area for those amenities that we've, we've invested a lot of money and, and the community's invested a lot into, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Weld. Uh, Councilmember Beaton?
Um, well, I appreciate the effort. I, um, can't support this amendment. Councilmember Gregor and I had an opportunity to speak about, uh, this, the original amendment before the meeting, um, and I had agreed to second it. You know, my, my interest was to make biking in our community easier and, and less complicated. You know, to, to stipulate kind of what, what we can lock to and what we can't lock to, um, creates a lot of confusion. I also, I feel really strongly that, um, in all areas of our community, um, not just outside of the downtown, but even especially within the downtown area, bike parking is extremely limited. And, uh, I, I, I do think it's important, uh, to start looking at ways that we can reduce parking on these areas that are listed, that, uh, trees, signs, and our public art. But I think that we really need to make a concerted effort to in, increase, uh, bike parking first before we do that. So I guess I won't be supporting this, but, um, hope to see some more solutions come forward in collaboration with staff and the bids.
Thank you, Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Strobel?
Thank you. I, I think we're talking to Councilmember Weld's amendment. Can we talk to Councilmember Gregor's, to, or we, we wait on that one, or how do we?
Let's, let's focus on Councilmember Weld's, uh, addition of the language.
I do support that as a, as a compromise here. I, um, I, I would have preferred we left this whole section alone. I mean, I think it was a pretty good ordinance that staff worked on, went through all the multiple parties and the, the multiple, um, uh, Business Improvement Districts to present this, and, uh, the enthusiasm for that was, was there. I think as a, I can speak to this and, and the, the not having bike parking, I, I, I'm down there every day. I, I see bike racks that aren't used every day. And, you know, the Pablo Center's probably got, I don't know how many of them, right behind them on the trail there, probably thirty or forty. The Business Improvement District just spent over five thousand dollars to add more bike racks to the, uh, Haymarket, um, Haymarket Landing site. So I think there are plenty of bike racks and our big concern down there is businesses. And these people, all of us, myself included, paid a lot of money for those, uh, those improvements. I mean, some of these businesses were special assessed over eighty thousand dollars, these decorative lights, um, the poles, the, uh, the benches, the, the garbage cans, those are being paid for by the businesses down there. And, and they don't necessarily wanna see them wrecked or especially, you know, on the trees as well. So it's not just the trees, it's the decorative poles. And there are plenty of bike racks down there for the use that I'm seeing down there, for sure. And there's more coming this summer. And I think, uh, Ms. Ness also said that Graham Ab's getting another twenty plus bike rack, so I, I think it's fair to, to leave language like that in, um, to protect the, the investment that we have down there. And I don't think it's hurting the bicycle people. I think it's just notifying them that you shouldn't park there, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Strobel. Councilmember Emmanuel?
Thank you, Acting President Worthman. I'm wondering if we could have maybe somebody from legal or maybe Ms. Ness just share about what is, maybe to answer my question about what is, what are the current laws about where bikes can, can't be parked? And is this, as it's originally written, is any of this redundant? Like, if we took it out, do other laws still stay because they already exist?
I think this is gonna be for Ms. Stromberger.
So in answer to your question, um, it's a yes and no. We don't have anything in city code currently that addresses it. I think, as Councilmember Gregor, that pointed out, it's just the one sentence in city code currently. Um, there is state statute though that says that you can't obstruct any, uh, traffic signs or intentionally interfere with the effective operation of them. So if somebody's attaching to a sign, um, that affects the visibility of it or the effectiveness of it in some way, um, that's already prohibited by state statute and potentially overlaps with, uh, what is proposed here.
May I ask a follow-up, please? So what is that, the one sentence? I, I have needed a reminder in that.
Um, in the draft that staff proposed, it is paragraph B. Says no person shall park a bicycle. So that's how it starts out.
May I ask a follow-up? So then, the conclusion of that is, um, then when the words trees, signs, poles, art, et cetera, that's confirming B, as staff wrote it? B, as staff wrote it?
Correct.
Okay. So if this language, if I may ask another question? If this language was removed, that doesn't supersede this language that already says, in a more generalized statement, you can't do X, Y, Z? Still enforceable? If somebody locks their dockless bike to a tree, if somebody locks it to a public art, that B still exists? It's in the, um, motion resolution, and it could be enforceable if it was a problem?
It could be enforceable, but B requires that it obstructs normal pedestrian or vehicle, vehicular traffic in order for it to be a violation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna let someone else speak, because, um, Councilmember Strobel, you've, you've spoken on this, but you can, we'll come back to you. Uh, Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you Acting President Worthman. This is a more general question. As we began our conversation, it was my understanding that, um, Councilmember Gregert brought this because it had not been discussed by the, um, bike advisory board. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
I'll, uh, I'll let Councilmember Gregert answer that.
Thank you Acting President Worthman. Um, the, when I spoke with the Chair of, of, of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission today, he, there was a lot of focus on the, they asked, the fact that we're, what was in front of them was about dockless bicycle share, and I think just the detailing of the, they, they thought that, that the, um, at least, at least the Chair felt that the, um, the parking provision at the end of the document was pertaining to bicycle share, and not necessarily to, to the broader bicycle, um, environment, I guess, that we have currently. Um, so I, so I don't think that it was, understood the gravity of the, of the language at the time.
May I follow up?
Sure.
So, but the bid, uh, boards were pretty clear as to what they were considering and what the impact would be for their jurisdiction. Um, my question then would be, if we simply recognize that there was a lack of clarity here, when, when would this come back to be amended again? If we, if we passed it, uh, based on Councilmember Gregert's, for example, how would this come back in front of council for further clarification on, um, the language of item C?
Um, maybe I'll take a stab at that, but my understanding is that, um, that provisions in the parking ordinance could come forward, working with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, I don't know if it's in the work plan or not, but maybe they would work on that and, and bring forward these kind of recommendations on bicycle parking beyond dockless bicycles. Maybe it's something that the City Council, by just having this discussion, is helping to encourage this, that's kind of my understanding of it. Councilmember Strobel, did you want to speak on this? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you Acting President Worthman. I, I think this discussion, like, essentially proves my point that we need to spend some time on this, because, I mean, we are, we have about a half hour left in our meeting before we have to be out of the room, is my understanding as well. Um, but just to, to justify my reason for not supporting this amendment to the amendment, is to say that currently, we do, really do not have bicycle parking in about half of the, of the, uh, walk your wheels areas right now. Um, there's some bike parking, if we're, if we're gonna look at Water Street, for example, um, there's only some, uh, on the, kind of the eastern end over by Aspens and Moganson Hall, and one in front of a bike shop on the four hundred block. Um, and West Grand Avenue, I can't think of any bicycle parking. Um, I'm not, I don't even have a map of the walk your wheels, uh, territory, so I can't even really judge it effectively right now to be able to even vote on this, uh, but Bellinger Street, if that's included, has no bicycle parking. Um, most of Madison Street has no bicycle parking. Graham Avenue is being, is starting to have bike parking and will within the summer, so essentially, I wouldn't support this because we don't have places for people to park their bicycles, to actually follow this ordinance, and I wouldn't want to pass an ordinance that we're not going to enforce, and obviously, we are gonna have challenges enforcing it anyway, because we don't have, like, it would be, our CSOs, my understanding, would be the ones potentially enforcing this. Um, and, um, really, I want to reiterate the point that really all this discussion started based on the dockless bicycle share, um, concept, and the ordinance around that, and the fact that we've implemented bike corrals, so I think we should focus on that tonight, and then certainly welcome the ideas, and I do, really, actually really like this idea of, of defining it as the walk your wheels area, but we're just not ready for that yet, because we don't have the bike parking there yet, so.
Thank you Councilmember Gregert. I think that probably concludes the conversation on the amendment being offered by, um, Councilmember Weld. Just to review again, it adds, it's an amendment to, Councilmember Gregert's amendment, amendment that you see in the screen here would add, um, and section E, which would say bicycles shall not be secured to any trees, signs, poles, public art, or other items, and public right of way, other than a bicycle rack, corral, or similar designated location, and the specific walk your wheels area, that language was added to it as well. Um, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Beaton?
No.
Bergy?
No.
Christopherson?
No.
Emanuel?
No.
Gregor?
No.
And that item, that amendment fails, we move back to the amendment presented, what you see on the screen here. Is there further comment or dialogue on that? Councilmember Strobel?
One more, one more bite at the apple here. Um, uh, Councilmember Gregert, um, I, when you were mentioning, uh, bike parking on Water Street, I'm, I'm sure they added a bike corral in front of Mona Lisa's last year as well? And, and, um, and then also, I think there's a, a bike corral on, on Graham Ave now in front of the, um, the, the bike shop there, so those are a couple of the new bike corrals that, that were added on street, and I just, I just want to clarify that it seems to me that, that if you support this amendment, that you're saying it's okay to, to tie up, or to lock a bike up to the light poles, the, the trees, and the, the amenities on, and the sculptures on, on any of the business districts, that's what it seems like, uh, my, my councilmembers are okay with. I just, I don't, I, I think everything was going pretty well on this, and I, I just don't understand the, um, the opposition of that. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Strobel. Um, uh, there was three people's hands up. Who would like to speak first? Councilmember, um, Emanuel?
Thank you Acting President Worthman. Uh, my understanding is that dockless bikes don't get locked up. There is no locking. Except for when they're done with their ride, then they indicate that and interfaces with the GPS, so I don't think locking of a bike will even occur.
Um, Councilmember Beaton, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to reiterate that, um, I think, and I think that this was reflected in some other councilmembers', um, comments too, but, um, you know, I will be supporting this, um, but it's not because I think locking to art is okay. Um, I think that we have a larger bicycle parking issue, um, and we can't, um, prohibit people from locking, we, we can't, we can't, you know, restrict without having another solution. We're, we're prohibiting things without giving people options, and so, um, I'm hoping that this conversation sparks a, a greater conversation with our city about how to address that bike parking, because, um, I know, I know that there is, there are park, uh, bike parking issues downtown and throughout our city.
Thank you Councilmember Beaton. Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you Acting President Worthman. Um, I'm not in favor of securing bicycles to art and valuable poles, but this did come up about dockless bikes, bicycles, and this is what's going to appear on the screen, so that the only people that will see this regularly are people with dockless bicycles, and it certainly gives us a lot of time to deal with the larger issue of what does everyone in our community do with their bicycles?
Thank you Councilmember Christopherson, but I could just clarify that, um, it, I think this provision that we're looking at right now may not be on the app itself, it's in the ordinance, but I think the provisions in the app are specifically mentioned in five point six four point oh five oh, B, one through, now I think it's seven, so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, Councilmember Weld?
Acting President, yeah, again, clarification, I believe the ordinance is for all bicycles, not just dockless bicycles. This is pertaining to anyone riding a bike or parking a bike, in, you know, in, in the city limits, and, and not just the dockless ones.
Thank you Councilmember Weld, and, and, and that is correct, that the, this provision that we're looking at, which is an amendment to our parking ordinance, pertains, um, to, to all bicycles, in, in the conversation we're having right now. Um, further comment? Councilmember Gregert?
Thank you Acting President Worthman. I, I did just want to, um, answer a question from Councilmember Strobel about location of bicycle corrals, and it's important to keep in mind that, that they're seasonal, in terms of their implementation in the community, and I believe they were removed in November, or around that time period, so, so if we're talking about right now, and may, and, and for the next month, or maybe even two months, depending on the snow, um, there are no bicycle corrals on Graham Avenue or Water Street, and, and what bike parking does exist on sidewalks is largely covered in massive snow piles right now and not being cleared. Um, so, for the hardy winter bikers that still exist out there, um, like they, many of them have, have, don't have a choice as to where they're, whether they're parking on a, on a rack, or a, or a, um, a pole, they just need a place to make sure the bike is in a safe place, um, but also out of the way of other people, so it's not a safety hazard for other folks, and I've even had a bicycle blow away because I didn't lock it up, because of a storm, so, um, I think it's, uh, there's a lot, lot to consider here, and I do appreciate the interest in the, in, in the topic, but I'm afraid we're gonna need more time to, to explore it.
Thank you Councilmember Gregert. Seeing no further discussion on this item, the amendment that we see here on the screen, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weld?
No.
Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
And that amendment passes. We move back to the ordinance on the table. There are further amendments or conversation about this ordinance? Councilmember Emanuel?
Thank you Acting President Worthman. I wanna, um, just thank all the people who've worked on this. Uh, I remember my first, um, volley at this, I had to come before the City Council and ask permission to use travel funds to go and study this at an American Planning Association conference. Um, there were two conferences in the country that year, one in DC and one in Chicago, and, um, I'm really grateful to the council and to staff who supported a future vision of bringing in a, another type of transportation to our community, and during that time, you know, it was brought to my attention about some of the social justice restrictions or opportunities, and, um, you know, this really sets some of the infrastructure to then begin entertaining requests for proposals, and proposals of, um, potential, um, bike share, um, plans to come to our community, and if done right, a bike share program can not only help, uh, improve the fun, the funness factor, improve the health, the accessibility, um, even just the maintenance of owning a bike can be cumbersome to folks, um, and, uh, it can be a huge stress relief, uh, for people just to have that, that wellness activity, and so this is, I think, a wonderful, um, connection for our community. I also see that, we also have, uh, long parking discussions, and we spend a lot of money figuring out parking plans and paying for parking structures, and more people were riding bikes, we'd have a little less cars to be worried about. Um, and I am a vehicle driver, we have two in our family, so I'm not, um, um, saying cars are bad, uh, however, if we can look at, um, making, riding your bike, taking public transportation as, um, an easy choice, I think that we'll have some longer-term successes for really the big picture that our community's going, so, um, I hope this passes, and we'll look forward to, um, seeing what else comes out of this. I also want to thank, um, Austin, who is here from the university tonight. Um, we met at my home several times over this last year, and I've met with previous folks from the university over many years on advancing this idea, um, and, and many other, um, community leaders on this, so it's a special day, for sure.
Thank you Councilmember Emanuel. Any last thoughts or discussion before we vote? Seeing none, we will call the roll.
Councilmember Worthman?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We've moved to our last ordinance for action this evening, which is regarding parking. This ordinance, uh, item number twenty-two, would amend table nine of our city code of ordinances of the City of Eau Claire entitled Parking During Specified Hours, specifically Parking Prohibited Passenger Loading Zone, related to parking near the Pablo at the Confluence. Last evening, we had, um, the presentation on this, and we heard from a couple folks about, uh, the two changes, um, that we're gonna be seeing tonight. Was there any follow-up questions that council had regarding this item? Any follow-up council had regarding this? Seeing none, on a motion then by Councilmember, I think we're around to Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Emanuel, this parking item has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Councilmember Strobel?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to add in, I was gonna almost do this last night, um, that, th- this was a, a really good example of, uh, um, staff working with, uh, the businesses, um, that through the DEKI Parking Committee. Initially, that Graham Ave was signed, no parking from four PM to two AM every day, so a lot of empty spaces all the time, the businesses weren't real happy about that, and Pablo didn't need it then, so we all got together, and, um, we worked out sort of a shared agreement on that, and the businesses all said, whatever Pablo needs, they get, we don't have a problem with that at all, so we worked on the signing, and, uh, you know, it's a, it's a really good shared use, all the businesses down there very happy with it, I think Pablo's happy with it, and then also, we get to add in this, uh, loading zone for LSS, which it seemed like was very well needed, so I think it was really, um, I want to thank staff, uh, um, Ms. Ness and, and Mr. Solberg for meeting with us as well. Uh, I think it was a really good compromise for everybody.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Strobel. Any other comments, um, thoughts or ideas on this ordinance before we vote? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Beaton?
Aye.
Bergy?
Aye.
Christopherson?
Aye.
Emanuel?
Aye.
Gregor?
Aye.
Strobel?
Aye.
Weld?
Aye.
Worthman?
Aye. And that passes. We move then to our announcements this evening from our City Manager and City Council. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you Acting President Worthman. Uh, just a couple of announcements. Um, on next Thursday, March seventh, uh, you have three different things to occupy your day. One is from, uh, noon to four, um, we'll be doing some time, spending some time together on the strategic plan, uh, goal, and doing, doing some training on that. Um, and then that evening, you have two choices, either to attend the rescheduled Chippewa Valley Rally, or Chippewa Valley Joint Cities Meeting up in Bloomer, or the Council President Candidate Forum, so, uh, all of that is going on, on March seventh, and then on March thirteenth, uh, is the Eleventh Annual Downtown Eau Claire Awards Evening, and if you're interested in going to that, please, uh, let Ms. Morrell know. That's all I have, thank you. Oh, other than, we have a work session immediately following this, uh, in, on Affordable Housing, in the room behind the council chambers here. Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the City of Eau Claire. A transcript of this meeting is available for the hearing impaired. It will be available within seven days of this telecast. Call seven one five eight three nine four nine one two, or TDD seven one five eight three nine one six eight nine, or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box five one or write Eau Claire City Clerk, PO Box 5148, Eau Claire, Wisconsin 54702-5148. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at 715-839-5067, or online at valleymediaworks.org.